Town manager page, ready to begin? Louder. Okay. Good evening. I call this November 9th meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. On November 14th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. This meeting was scheduled outside of our usual second and fourth Tuesday meeting cycle to avoid a conflict with Election Day. Officer Peace has served as a police officer for six years and is currently a patrol officer assigned to Uniform Patrol. We appreciate him being with us here tonight as our Sergeant-at-Arms. This time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao to deliver tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening's invocation is in honor of our veterans of our country as we prepare Veterans Day. Please bow our heads in prayer. We come together this evening to express our profound gratitude for the sacrifices and contributions veterans and their families have made on the battlefield at home and at posts around the world. Veterans Day this year follows after a hard-fought political campaign. We pray this evening that God gives us the unity strength to find union in our great diversity, to sustain that strength and unity even during hard and difficult times. Tonight, we remember that our military is one of the most diverse institutions in our nation comprised of model citizens who represent every corner of our country, immigrant and native-born, from all walks of life, all forged and coming together to the common service of our nation. And now, when the election is over, we pray that you give us the strength to continue as one nation. We remember this evening that some of our best examples of unity come and are demonstrated by the women and men we salute today. Tonight, we remember young Americans on 9/11, first responders who ran into the towers and then went to a recruiting center and signed up to serve. We remember a military that functions as a unit, a team, always looking after each other. We remember that our veterans are our business partners and bosses, coaches, first responders, teachers, city council members, community leaders, county commissioners, all serving this country we love with the same duty and valor when they wore a uniform. And finally, on Veterans Day, we acknowledge that we can never serve our veterans in the way they served us, but what we can do is practice kindness. We can volunteer, we can serve, we can respect each other, we can always have each other's backs. This is what we should be thinking about on Veterans Day, and we ask that you give us the strength to do so. Finally, I'll end with President Barack Obama's reminder at an address. He said to our nation that "the person you pass as you walk down the street might not be wearing our nation's uniform today, but consider for a moment that a year or a decade or a generation ago, he or she might have been one of our fellow citizens who is willing to lay down their life for strangers like us." And we can show how much we love our country today by loving our neighbors as ourselves. As I close out this invocation, I remind each of us that let the veterans, our superheroes, be an everlasting reminder of the light and love, of hope that lives in each of us and of what our nation can be and should be. God keep our troops safe wherever they may be, and God bless the United States of America. Amen.
Thank you. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to share? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: consideration of items related to plat review officer appointment, recommendation, a resolution amending the adopted FY 2023 user fee schedule, and amendment to Chapter 58, Article 3, traffic control devices. Would anyone like to pull any of those items for discussion before we take a vote? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's also unanimous, 7-0. There are three administrative reports tonight: a Church Street Park Projects Report, an FY 2023 First Quarter Financial Report, and a Fall Advisory Committee Recruitment Report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on any of those items?
Church Street.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
I wanted more update on the Church Street that we had questions last time.
Item 8A. Your name and title for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Mark Spanioli, Director of Engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella. What questions do you have, sir?
I mean, I read this, the scoreboard, right? I was under the impression when we first signed it, anything on north of 1.25, they will cover it. And now I'm seeing that it's not in scope, so I think, was it a mistake from our side or their side? Or they basically scoped themselves?
So, the scope of work and what's in the agreement, what you said is correct. The 1.25 million, anything above 1.25 million, they would have to cover those costs. What's not in the agreement is any mention of a scoreboard. There are specific items in the agreement for both, I'll call it the northern lot and the southern lot, and the scoreboard was not part of those items.
And then, I would just, disappointing, and the second one they said is, in the news, in the Cricket USA, like whatever, they came up, they said 2,000 permanent bleachers, and now we heard 1392. What happened to the 700 that they advertised it for us and the entire media?
I can't speak about the advertisement. I can't tell you that what's written in the agreement is that the seating, and it doesn't specify whether it's new grandstand seating, portable seating, existing grandstand seating, it says that the overall seating for the facility should be between 3,000 and 4,000. It doesn't specify...
But I can quote their own article saying permanent 2,000 bleachers are permanent seating. You know, I understand temporary, so we are like 700 short. So then, if that is not in the contract, they should honor what is in the contract of 2,000 and, you know, cough up the money to make that 2,000.
Well, I will certainly take that information back to them, council member. I was not aware of the advertisement that they put out.
I can show you articles. I read it quite after that. It clearly says permanent bleachers.
I'm happy to take that back to them. You know, I'm just following the technical activities and things that are inside the agreement that we have with them.
Okay, and the last, I think, are you guys okay with talking to the USA coach, Arun Jagdish, so to do one just plain concrete, or you think it is different than your design?
I did talk to the coach. He explained to me that, I guess because of the speed of the ball and during the training of the younger children between five and nine years old, it would be, I guess, beneficial to have one of the wickets to be the surface actually made out of concrete. We haven't made that adjustment yet. Doesn't mean we couldn't make the adjustment, we're still working through that. But below the surface of two of the practice wickets, it is concrete below the surface on the artificial turf, on the artificial turf wickets.
All right. Thanks for following up, and if you can follow up, I can send you the news articles that they had published.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, I don't think I'm still exactly clear on the multi-use courts. So I see that this says that the new sports court can accommodate basketball play and will provide an optional third basketball court on the southern lot, which is great. We need more basketball courts. But, so, do we have to do anything to that? Is it like just a concrete slab and you can play anything you want on it? Do we have to do something to it? What exactly is that?
So it is, to simplify it, it is basically a concrete slab with various striping for basketball, it could be for tennis, and then we would have portable or drop-down baskets for basketball on each end, as well as the ability to bring out a tennis net across the center, things like that. So it's like, that's how we would characterize, yeah, a multipurpose.
Okay, and so would that be, so in other words, would that be something where people that live here would reserve it for basketball and Parks and Rec staff would go out and bring down the basketball courts? Or do you just get there in the morning and if you want to play tennis, you pull out the net yourself? Like, how exactly?
That's a good question. Yeah, it would certainly be regulated and handled by the Parks Department. I'm not sure if it would be done on a reservation basis or depending on the season, when they have basketball season, put the basketball. I'm not 100% sure how that operates, but the ability to have the third basketball court is there.
Okay, so, but what it is in it, I guess you would call it like it's natural state, it's a concrete slab with striping?
Right.
That, but no one can play anything on it, right? I mean, there's no nets, there's no baskets, there's no nets, there's no...
Depending on what we choose for the installation of the baskets, they could be permanent posts that fold up and down, or they might be rolling ones. I'm not sure at this moment, but they will have the ability to have basketball. On the reservation side of it, I'm not sure how that works programming-wise. I certainly could find that out and get back to you.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, I just think it would be a best-case situation if the court was usable for something as a default. But yeah, that was my only thought there. Thank you.
Is it true also, that's my understanding, that you can have a tennis setup or volleyball or badminton, there's different heights for the net?
That's correct.
So it's really a true multipurpose court?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like to just circle back to where Councilmember Garamella started. Anything that we can do to have the conversations necessary to make sure that we're meeting the minimum needs to have some of the highest-level cricket? We've been talking about World Cup, like a real game or a qualifier. If we could keep the expectations reasonable so we can communicate clearly to people what we're expecting and how it's coming along, I think that would be helpful for everybody.
Absolutely.
2024 is around the corner.
It is.
Any other questions for our town engineer? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Two other items on the admin reports, any questions on those? Seeing none, moving on to item 9, presentations. We have five presentations tonight: Proclamations Recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month, World Pancreatic Cancer Day, and Small Business Saturday, Teen Morrisville 101 Graduate Recognition, and the FY 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Councilmember Rabadi will read the first proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked to read this proclamation because my mother died of lung cancer in 2007, and I have high hopes that in my lifetime, I'll see the end of lung cancer. So, Proclamation Recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and North Carolina, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, pancreatic cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, there were 41,258 new lung cancer cases and 27,124 deaths because of lung cancer between 2014 and 2018 in North Carolina. And whereas, screening for lung cancer in high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest x-rays in a national lung screening trial, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women, as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas, funding for lung cancer research trails far behind funding for research on many other cancers, an additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas, lung cancer in nonsmokers accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the U.S. every year. And whereas, organizations working in North Carolina, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in North Carolina. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim November 2022 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in North Carolina, recognizing the need for research in lung cancer and encourages all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Signed, T.J. Colley, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Johnson will read the next proclamation.
So unfortunately, I'm going to read a proclamation declaring November 17th as World Pancreatic Cancer Day to highlight another cancer that unfortunately takes many deaths here in our nation. And as Councilmember Rabadi just said, lung cancer is the number-one cause of cancer deaths in the United States. Pancreatic cancer is the third-leading cause of cancer deaths. So I lost my dad to pancreatic cancer, and so it's an honor to read this. Proclamation Recognizing World Pancreatic Cancer Day on November 17th. Whereas in 2022, an estimated 62,210 people in the United States will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, one of the deadliest cancers, and approximately 50,000 will die from the disease. And whereas, pancreatic cancer surpasses breast cancer in 2019 to become the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and it is projected to become the second-leading cause by 2023. And whereas, compared to the other major cancers, pancreatic cancer has the lowest five-year survival rate at just 11%. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in late stages, and 72% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. And whereas, approximately 1,600 deaths will occur in North Carolina in 2022. And whereas, pancreatic cancer is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related deaths in men and women across the world. And whereas, there will be an estimated 558,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide by 2025 or in 2025. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of Morrisville are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby designate November 17th, 2022, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Town of Morrisville. And I'm just going to just say a couple of more things, and I want to thank the council for this proclamation. This is a proclamation that we've done for many, many years. On behalf, I am the Chair of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network Raleigh Durham Affiliate, and so on behalf of our 100-plus volunteers and thousands of family members in the region that are affected by pancreatic cancer, I thank each one of you for allowing us to do this again this year, this November, and I personally thank you. And all those who may be affected by pancreatic cancer or know someone, please reach out to me. I'm very fortunate to be able to be contacted on a regular basis by not only our residents but here in the Town of Morrisville, but staff members and folks I know. So you are welcome to reach out to me, and you are also welcome to reach out to pancan.org. Pancan.org has a wealth of information to help those that are unfortunately on this journey of pancreatic cancer, but there is hope. And that's why the 100-plus volunteers and I here locally are actively working to raise money for research and treatment options for pancreatic cancer. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao will read our final proclamation of the evening.
This is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Whereas Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting small businesses and communities across the country. Founded by American Express in 2010, this day is celebrated each year on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas, the goal of Small Business Saturday is to remind consumers that they play a key role in helping the small businesses in their community thrive and encourage them to get out and shop and dine at local businesses. And whereas, when you spend money in your community, your sales tax supports public education, parks, and street improvements, as well as vital services like firefighting and public safety. And whereas, supporting small local businesses ensures that Morrisville will maintain its unique personality while also providing jobs for the local community. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim, does hereby recognize November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the Town of Morrisville. We urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Signed, Mayor T.J. Colley, Town Clerk, and the Council of Morrisville. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask our current President of the Morrisville Chamber interim President Rose Cornelius and Benjamin Tillman, Communications Director and Manager of the Chamber. Accept this proclamation.
Thank you for all the leadership you've brought to this community, and we want to congratulate you for accepting the role of the work and the great state of Morrisville last week. It's my honor to present you this proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you, Town Council, for your affirmation of small businesses in our community. I encourage everyone to shop local, shop small on November 27, but before then and well after then. So support our small businesses. Thank you, Council. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I want you to dress.
Okay.
At this time, Will Glenn, our Communications and Outreach Director, will make the next presentation. Mr. Glenn.
Will Glenn, Communication Outreach Director. It is my pleasure to recognize our latest Team Morrisville 101 graduates. If anybody doesn't know by now, Team Morrisville 101 is our four-week resident academy for high school students to learn all about Morrisville government. We had a spectacular time this year. Our subject this year was sustainability, so we had the kids out in the creek doing some water testing with Tony Victor. We did solar energy with Kimberly Conley and recycling as well, and they always enjoy our fire and police departments also. So I'm going to ask our students if they could stand up and line up here for me. Going to call their names and get certificates out. We're going to follow that up with a photo with council if we could. I'm going to ask our parents to stand at the very end to recognize them as well. All right, students, don't be shy. You guys can stand up and line up here. We had 14 students this year. One is sick this evening, and I think two just didn't make it. So I'm going to call your name, if you can get your certificate, and walk out front for me, please. I'm going to start with Sai Aragani.
Go right to the front.
I'm going to call the names of the ones who are not here as well, just to recognize them. Pranjal Guatim is not here this evening. I don't see a... Bonshi Mota is here. So I'll call Rui Patel. Damn that, Rui. Her sister, Riva Patel, is sick, so we'll give Riva her certificate as well. Amoha Shrenavasan. And Aiden Stedford. Let's give our students a round of applause, please. I want to ask our parents of these students to stand as well, to be recognized. I know in some cases, it was you who signed them up, because I spoke to you via email. I want to ask our council to come down if you could, and if you could step down a couple of steps, students, please, we're going to get your photo.
I expect we'll see some of them as future council members and legislators and everything right here in town, so thank you very much for your efforts. This time, we're going to move on to item 9E. Nancy Elmsley, Finance Director, will make the final presentation of the evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It is my pleasure to be here with you this evening to share our audit experience and the preparation of our annual comprehensive financial report, fondly known as the ACFR. This was for fiscal year '22. We were without a controller from mid-May to early August, and so that meant I had to assume a lot more an active role in the audit, which I wouldn't normally do, and in preparation of that information that was requested by our auditors. Our controller typically is the one that takes lead regarding the audit, and I was very pleased when Casey Langley joined us as our controller on August 8th. She actually had to hit the ground running, and her first task was to reconcile our fixed assets and had to do a year's worth of review in just two weeks and get it ready for the auditors. So I wanted to recognize Casey. She's here with us this evening, and I'm very happy to have her as part of our team. This year was an interesting year in that we had to implement GASB-87, which is regarding the accounting and the reporting of our operating leases. This, I can tell you... This, I can tell you, was a very difficult and a very time-consuming implementation. We had very little guidance from the Local Government Commission, from the LDC, from the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, and from the governmental accounting standards board, GASB themselves. So it was, it was a very trying time, but we persevered, and we were, we were able to implement GASB 87 successfully. But as a result, and in constant consultation with our auditors, we made the decision to not record the lease agreements that were actually entered into our current year on our fund financial statements, since the amounts that of the understatements were considered immaterial. And so we are ready to address that next year, but wanted to let you know that this was something that, the decision was made when we had a second review from our, our audit partners on October 27, and we did not want to rewrite all our financials at that time. So, but April will speak more to this, about that in her presentation. But I wanted to also publicly thank the members of the Finance Department for their hard work, for their thoroughness, and their dedication, because not only did they have to help keeping the daily operations running, but they had to help yours truly with stepping up to help with the audit preparation that we needed to do, and all of that information that goes into preparing for, for our actual audit itself. It was definitely a team effort, and again, a big thank you to, to my staff. I really appreciate all that they do. Our audit was conducted again remotely this year with staff. We were working very closely with Carly Lang, in particular, at Cherry Beckett. And we would actually upload information to a portal, you know, email exchanges, have teams meetings. It worked very well, as it has in the past as well. And I'm very pleased to let you know that there were no Period 13 adjustments or adjusting entries from our auditors, and we received a clean opinion. A copy of the audit presentation by April Adams has been provided to you. We will also post the actual 150-plus page financial report on the town's website tomorrow. So that will be there, as mentioned in my briefing item, to you. So at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to April, who will talk more about the audit process and their findings.
I am excited to be here to give you guys the results of the audit. And am I driving this? So first, I just wanted to acknowledge that I did not do this audit by myself. I, of course, also had a team, and that we work for the board. The board hires us, and we report to you the results of the audit. So I am the engagement partner. I'm the one that signs the report and oversees all the activities and procedures and makes, sets the plan. Our firm does require that every audit be reviewed by a second partner as well before we, before we issue it. Scott Anderson is new to your engagement, but he actually spent the last two years at the GASB, learning all the underlying things that are happening there and working on some of the future standards coming out. So he was a great addition and fresh eyes to look at your report and make sure that we did everything we were supposed to, and that he didn't see anything that needed to be addressed. Also, need your team was Jennifer Moran out of New Hampshire, which is part of the reason why your audit was done remotely. We are now able to use resources all over the state to conduct, or all over the country to, to conduct your audit. And then lastly, was Carly Long, was a senior, and she was the one who really pulled all the audit work together and was digging in the details and asking all the questions. So thank you to everybody on our team as well to get the audit completed. All right. So tonight, what I'd like to cover with you are the results of the audit and the single audit. Those are the federal and state dollars that the town administers during the year. I'd like to talk about how we incorporate internal controls and what we report on as far as those go in the audit. The corrected and uncorrected misstatements are the adjustments that might have come up or about during the audit. Talk about those briefly. And then I have a whole bunch of required communications. So in the past, when we have issued the audit, we've issued the report itself, as well as a letter that accompanied that. We have done away with the letter, and this presentation serves that same purpose. So I will go over, as I have in the past, the information, but you won't have the actual letter itself. And then there are some other matters as far as our independence and some things that I'll go over. And then the reporting changes is just a friendly reminder of the new standards coming about. Now that we've got GASB 87 behind us, we'll look to the future at what else they have in store for us to change as far as reporting. All right. So the results of our audit, we did complete the audit. We did date it, October 28, 2022. And we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves. And then we issued Yellow Book Opinion, which is the government auditing standard, and a federal and state single audit compliance report. All of those are all clean, or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. No findings or issues reported in the. An unmodified is also known as clean opinion. That is the opinion that you want, and that is the highest level of assurance we can give you as a firm, that your financial statements are free from material misstatements. All right. As far as single audit, we did have several major programs during the year. We tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Those are also fall under the common ARPA acronym that you hear. So those are, those are also known as ARPA funds. We tested those. We tested the highway planning and construction, and then we also tested the Powell Bill Funds, which is also the street. What we're testing for is for those various 14 different compliance requirements for each grant, looking at the administration of those. And so we did all those tests and looked at all the administration of it and had no findings. Get one more. I'm going to skip past that and come back. So I did have just a couple of financial highlights to pull from just about the general fund itself that you'll find within the financial statements. The revenues for the general fund exceeded the budget by 1.85 million. The large majority of that is related to the sales tax. I'm sure you've been told month after month how much the sales tax have come in higher than your, than your budget. So that's the annual accumulation of, of that. Your expenditures were also under budget by 4.82 million. A large majority of that is in the capital outlay, which just, I would say, means that, you know, either capital projects didn't occur as planned for the year, and maybe, and maybe just going to have those expenditures occur in the future. Your unassigned fund balance as a percent of the general fund, this is a common metric that, that everybody looks at as far as the health of an organization, a government organization, was 36.34%. So what that means is that you have fund balance available to spend, measured against how much you actually spent in that fund. And then the result of all of the, the budget up and down, so during the year, as you set your budget and adjusted it throughout the year, you had planned on using your fund balance up to about $8 million. You didn't use $8 million. You only used 1.4 million. And that's the, that's the combination of not, you know, receiving 1.85 million more than you planned on, and then spending less than you planned on. So the combination. All right. So as far as internal controls, we don't actually opine on internal controls as a part of our audit. And so that's, this slide has a lot of words on it, but that's basically what it's telling you, is that we don't opine on it. But we are required, as a part of the audit standards, to do quite a bit of work with internal controls. And so what we do is we obtain all of the policies and procedures for what we deem to be the significant transaction cycles, and then we review those. We do a walkthrough of one, which is really a test of one transaction. We take it from how it initiates all the way through how it ultimately ends up in your financial statements. And then we also can decide from there if it makes sense for us to actually test those controls and rely upon them as a part of our assurance balances. So we do test controls over your cash disbursements and your payroll as a part of your audit. We do that. Findings to report as far as that goes. What we would report would be either a material weakness or a significant deficiency, but we don't have any, so this slide is, no sense in going in the details of what's what on that, because we didn't have to report any of those. Great. All right. So as far as adjustments go for an audit, there's two types of audit adjustments that may occur. So from the time that we are provided a trial balance to the time that we issue and finish our audit, we are required to report any transactions or adjustments that are not clearly immaterial. So there's ones that are, we call corrected, which mean we find them and you actually post them. We did not have any of those adjustments that needed to be made, which is great. And then we have what we call uncorrected adjustments. And so as Nancy alluded to, her comments was that there was one past adjustment identified as a part of the audit. The good news is it's not that management missed anything, it's management intentionally decided not to book this entry. What would happen is if this entry had been booked, it would have shown or looked on your general fund statements as if the town over expended dollars. What the adjustment represents is that, is accumulation of lease transactions that will happen over the future. When you set your budget, you're setting your budget on transactions that will happen in the current year. It made more sense, if, if they could, to leave it out of the statement altogether. But that's what's happened. You're missing other financing sources of $339,000, and you're also missing an expense of capital outlay. So they kind of net each other out in the end. Hopefully, I did a good job of keeping that high level to where you can understand it. I'm happy to, to try to help you.
You probably did do a great job of explaining that. I'm really sorry. I still don't exactly understand what you just said. Could you maybe like?
Yeah. All right. So the standard itself, the lease standard itself, you, the town historically has had capital or operating leases all along. Let's just take an example of a copy machine. You enter in that lease at the, at whatever date that could have been, you know, this year or last year. Whenever you enter it in, you have these monthly payments that you make of a lease. What the audit standard says is, at the time, the town committed to making these future payments, and they want it recorded at the present value. And so that's what these $339,000 represent, leases that were entered into during the fiscal year. It's the present value of all those future payments. So when you set your budget, you're only really approving that current year's worth of payments, right? So these lease, these amounts are recorded at that government-wide level that records all, you know, all future payments.
Now you understand the level at which you have to explain these things.
Didn't know you were going to audit class tonight, did you? All right. So the next couple of slides are all this required communication. These are the things that typically would have been covered in that letter in the past. Also, high level. So we were just talking about GASB 87. We are required to inform you of any significant accounting policy changes. So the town implementing that standard did change some of the accounting policies, just as we discussed. Now they're recording operating leases as, as full assets and full liabilities. No inappropriate accounting policies or practices were noted as a part of our audit as well. This slide covers related party transactions, so we are required to ask a lot of questions about those, look for them as a part of our audit through all our procedures. We did not identify any related party relationships or transactions. Else to report on that? We are required to look at any significant unusual transactions and also report those. We are required to inform you of significant estimates that exist in your financial statements. Obviously, those are based on information and things that are known at the time of the statements by management and, and taken into consideration. So I just wanted to highlight for you what those estimates are, because best, best estimate. Allowance for doubtful accounts on your accounts receivable, estimate of, of accounts that they think they ultimately won't collect. Estimate of the useful life of the fixed assets. The fair value of the investments in donated assets, so you get a lot of streets. So the value of those. Your other post-deployment benefits, which is your health insurance for your retirees, your elders' pension, and your law enforcement separation. All estimates. And lastly, is the new estimate of the economic life of the leases that were put on the books for this year. So that's. Also, we are required to bring to your attention if there's any disclosures that are not neutral, consistent, or clear footnotes in your financial statements that you can't understand. As a part of our audit, we are required to evaluate our independence, and we are required to stay independent throughout the audit. So we document our consideration. There's one non-attest service that we provide to the town, and that is to complete all the data collection forms surrounding the federal dollars that, there's a form that gets filled out, we draft it, Nancy signs it, approves it, and all that stuff. Have to acknowledge that that is a non-attest service and document that there is a person with skills, knowledge, and competence and experience to, to take responsibility for that service that we provide. That's it. That's the only thing we had to consider, which isn't that hard. All right. Some more required communications. So there was no difficulties encountered as a result of our audit. There's no disagreements with management on any items. We did not consult any other audit firms for any expertise. Us, that it's a whole, I don't know, there's probably 50 representations in there of all different specifications of things that we asked, that we needed them to confirm. That to us. Management, as far as I'm concerned or aware, did not consult any other auditors. We did not have any other findings or issues as a part of our audit, no fraud or illegal acts, and we do not consider the operation a year from now, as far as I can think. And then other matters, it's just back to our financial statements and our opinion. There are a lot of schedules that, that are, show, that show up after the footnotes that are individual fund schedules. Our opinion is what we call relate, in related, in relation to opinions. So basically, all those schedules back there are in relation to the statements that we opine on upfront. So we just. Required supplementary information, this is the MDA that you'll see right after our opinion, and the, the schedules that have to do with the retirement, pension, there's a bunch of tenure schedules and stuff like that that are in there. We don't opine on those at all, but we do review them to make sure that we have a pine done. All right. And last is the new GASB standards that are coming up. Type in on GASB 96, and that's the one I want to talk about, because that's the one coming up next. It is very similar to the lease standard that we just implemented, but it covers the subscription-based technology arrangements. So any software or licensing agreements you have, better than that, and handled in the same format that we did the leases. Capitalized, capitalized as an asset and, and also have. The other fun one is GASB 101 that's coming up, related to compensated expenses. So currently, the town does not record a liability for the sick leave that, that employees get, and so we'll have to come up with an estimate of what that number is and the likelihood that it gets used. Consider all that and come up with a number. So I think that one will be a lot of fun. What we do calculate that. So those are the big ones that I think that will, that will have an impact. There is the public-private and the public-public partnerships. Those are where if you partner in with a developer or another government entity on One-by-one deal. All right. So in summary, you did receive clean opinions on the audit. That's the best results you can get. There, there are that past adjusting journal entry for leases. No single audit findings, good internal controls in play. Nancy and her team, and, and I'll give her a big pat on the back, because when you lose a key member. On time, and your audit was on time.
My love, my nights.
Questions?
I think we're all looking forward to the funness of GASB 101 in the next year. But I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
I just want to give kudos to Nancy and April, you know, for getting this done. You know, this is a testimony of like what our town does and transparency of how accounts are kept. And I think you will, the social media should focus this, because this is a key thing of keeping, you know, transparency of how we do accounting, and, you know, passing is super critical. So these kind of things go a long way, and I'm very, very thankful that you guys are doing strict audits and so that we can, we can openly talk to the people, saying that, hey, your dollars are safe and it's well utilized. That's all I'll say. Thank you so much.
From all of us, thank you. From all of us, thank you and thanks for a clean opinion. You guys are doing a great job, once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now at item 10, public address. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received and recognize anyone in the audience who signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. There was one public comment received outside of the public comment submission window. This comment discussed affordable housing and was provided to council in its entirety. There were two individuals signed up to give public comment. The first, Christian Senger.
Sir, you'll have three minutes to speak, your name and address for the record.
My name is Christian Senger. I live in 1052 Royal Stock Lane, actually in Cary, but I'm also part of the Wilson Place HOA Board and this concerns also our whole community. I came here in support for the topic 6C on the consent agenda tonight, which was the issue with the tractor trailer parking. And I understood earlier that this was actually approved, so I want to thank the council to take our concerns here really seriously at that point because we had massive issues with up to 10 tractor trailers, nine tractor trailers parked in front of the community in rows of three and causing really line-of-sight obstructions also in the intersections. So that was really a big concern for the community and a big discussion also with us as an HOA Board.
Thank you very much for sharing that information. The pictures were very enlightening as well that you provided.
Thank you so much.
You bet. The next speaker is Jonathan Meadows. Is there anyone else in the room who's interested in speaking for three minutes on any topic of your choosing? We don't generally address our public comments as they come in, but I'm very proud of our staff. We did a lot of really hard work figuring out how to address the issue of the parking in front of our monument on 54. So kudos to our staff for all the hard work they did to address that issue. Okay, moving on. We're scheduled now for a break and right now it's 6:53, so we'll take a 15-minute break and come back at 7:09. Okay, see you then. Thank you.
Bless you.
Doesn't go.
Did you know that you like pizza?
Hell yeah.
Pizza was good.
The more rose, the better.
Time to get your pitch, okay. We're reconvening at this time. We're at item 11, action items. There is one action item on this evening's agenda, a resolution and ordinance amendment to for executing an NC DOT agreement for this construction of Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1. That's HL-0033. And now at this time, I'd like to recognize Michelle Stiegel, our Planning Director, to provide a quick update on the Planning Department.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly recognize Danielle Kittredge. You may have noticed a change to her title on tonight's agenda from Senior Planner to Principal Planner. That is part of a restructuring that we have been going through in the department and have now completed. And it creates a small transportation unit within the department with our Planner 2 Transportation now reporting to Danielle. So we're excited about the additional efficiencies and a better alignment of duties that that is going to create. But it also recognizes Danielle and the considerable experience and education that she brings to the table and just the great job that she has done. So just wanted to take a moment and let all of you know that that change has occurred and recognize Danielle.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it and we appreciate all the hard work that shows through every time she presents, so thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Alright, so I'll go ahead and jump in to tonight's agenda item here. There are two components to it, a resolution as well as a, make sure I get the title correct, the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. These are both for Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1. And so what I wanted to do was just to provide a quick background and update on the project before we jump into those and making sure this project has been going on for a little while and sort of what the status is. As a reminder, this project is a new road construction. It's a four-lane roadway with median between Garden Square Lane and Church Street. It does have sidewalk components as well as two new traffic signals and a high-intensity pedestrian-activated crosswalk where Indian Creek Greenway Crossing would be located. This project was identified in the town's comprehensive transportation plan and it is one of the projects that the town has decided to pursue. Just a few key date reminders, in 2019, there was a local agreement that was signed with NC DOT to do the preliminary design and engineering for the project. And then in 2020, the town, it applied a few different times for lap funding. The one in 2020 was successful in an award in 2021. This is lap funding with a 40/60 match for right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation and construction funding. And then in July 2021, the town council did approve an agreement with NC DOT for the right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. So just an update on the right-of-way acquisition overall. It is, we are hopeful that it'll be completed by the end of this year. This includes right-of-way acquisition, temporary easements or other easements required for the project. As of the end of October, it was 85% complete. And one thing that I'll be touching on on the next slide, land values have significantly risen since the project started, so this is impacting total cost for right-of-way acquisition and there will be additional funds that are needed that we'll probably be back for at some point in time, but I do want to touch on that, just making sure that you all are aware of that as well. We've had a few updates that have occurred throughout the year, either administrative reports or in the quarterly Capital Projects Report with some status updates. And then should this project, on the current timeline that we're on, if the right-of-way acquisition does wrap up by the end of the year, we're looking at a let for construction date of June 2023 for the project. And based on this project being a town-led project, NC DOT is requesting to have the construction funding with the agreement when it's executed. They are asking for that agreement by December 2022, so just a little ways away. This gives them time to, of course, everything has a process. It has to go through their various, you know, construction bid office and everything to get to the point even in June. So I did want to mention that. A lot of times we're used to NC DOT projects in which we have betterments that we pay after the fact, but this is because it's a town-led project and NC DOT is managing for us, there is that little bit of difference that I did want to recognize. The next thing that I want to do is just talk about the overall project funding. So usually the three main categories is your design and engineering, your right-of-way acquisition and construction. So in terms of design and engineering, as a reminder, the town has paid a million dollars towards the design and engineering permitting that goes along with this project. And we do anticipate that there will be probably an additional $80,000 for design and engineering. The next one is right-of-way acquisition. To date, the town has paid $240,000 and then this goes into the lap funding in which it was a 40/60 split, so there is some grant funding associated with that. But as previously mentioned, we are anticipating that there may be a total of $1.4 million additional needed with the right-of-way acquisition in which, now this does include, there are a couple larger parcels as well as some demolition and a little bit of utilities in there as well. We are waiting for the final numbers from NC DOT as they kind of go through the process. And with any type of right-of-way acquisition, there is appraisals that are done, but then there are also sometimes negotiations that happen or other items that need to be accounted for. But we are anticipating something in that realm in which we can or do have ability to also go back to Campo and ask for 50/50 supplemental funds and in that case, 50% of that could be covered by Campo to account for that increase. The next item is construction and with this, we are looking at this is going to be tied to the NC DOT construction agreement. That is part of the resolution tonight. Right now, based on the numbers that are in there, we're looking at just under $4 million for the town to pay forward and about $3.9 million from the grant. Something to point out here is I do have a future category. The numbers that are provided for in the construction agreement are based off of project cost estimates. There will be, once the project goes to bid, we'll have that final number, so that would be approximately next June. At that time, there may be, it may be more, it may be a little bit less, but we also have that ability for asking for 50/50 supplemental funds from town council, town council, you guys are town council, the Campo as well and being able to help supplement some of that. The last category, I put other, there may be other potential costs that come up. We have, the project does have just a little bit of median area for landscaping, so maybe there's, you know, additional landscaping that the town would like to put in there. So there may be other costs that come up and just making you all aware of that. Based on these numbers, we are looking at the current split of, you know, about $5.3 million or $5.4 million with the town and the grant as $5.6 million. So that's sort of where the project stands right now in terms of what we're looking at as potential total cost. I do want to just look a little bit closer at the breakdown for the construction costs because that affects both of the resolution and the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. And here I have the original match, this is what comes from Campo and what was awarded in FY21, based on a variety of construction cost factors, not tied to any one specific thing. We are looking at, and a lot of it has to do to just general rising construction cost, about $1.3 million over the original estimate. So I did want to mention that as well, it's included, you know, so we're just breaking that out from the agreement. The other thing, as mentioned on the previous slide, once bids are received, we do have the option to go back to Campo and ask for 50/50 supplemental funds, so that will help offset some of the $1.3 million excess cost as well as any, if there are any other changes when those final bids are received. So the requested action tonight is to approve Resolution 2022-423-0. And this is authorizing the execution of the NC DOT construction agreement for Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1. And the second item is the Capital Project Ordinance Amendment 2022-423-0. And this is allocating an additional $774,033 for construction of Airport Boulevard Extension. I've detailed on the bottom of the slide to show, we have $2.3 million that were in bond proceeds that was allocated for this project. And when you look at what's required for the construction agreement for NC DOT to hold for this project in order to allow it to go onto the construction bid office, there is a funding gap and so the Capital Project Ordinance does pull over the funding that's needed for that gap. But one thing I do want to mention, although I'm talking about it, a gap on here in the capital investment program, it is still, the overall cost is still within what is in the FY23 line item for this particular project. So it's not asking for anything that is above and beyond what's in the capital investment program. It's more so moving money over to be allocated to the project. So I did want to make sure that was clear as well. And with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. Very important project for the town of Mooresville, so thank you for outlining the various factors related to both funding and the need to get this under contract as soon as possible so that we can stop having cost, you know, factors going against us. Could we go back to the slide that specifically talks about funding, project funding, yes, yes. So I appreciate you providing the funding broken out by phase because that's, we're nearing that construction phase, which is a milestone. However, how much have we spent to date and then how much do we anticipate knowing things will change in the future? I think using the bond funds are an important message to the public, but just understanding, you know, what it might take to finish the project. Because the cost summary, I wasn't really clear if the, you know, the amount from the town included the past monies as well as the anticipated current and then future, or if it was just past and current.
Yeah, so the cost summary is based on what has been spent as well as the estimated future cost for the project is kind of detailed on that slide, so providing sort of a high-level snapshot of that, accounting for that potential 50/50 supplemental funds for, for example, the right-of-way acquisition, which is counted in there. In terms of what's been spent so far, there has been, for the design and engineering, there's been a million dollars for that. And then we have paid the $240,000 towards the right-of-way acquisition, which was part of the original agreement. So that's what has been spent so far in terms of what the town has provided to NC DOT, but knowing that, you know, we are 85% into right-of-way acquisition, we're acquiring some cost on that as well, based on my conversations with NC DOT and sort of knowing what the appraisals were, where there's sort of that little bit of range that can happen in negotiations.
It's significant, yes.
This is a close approximation to where we may be at.
Right. And then just a recap, we have asked town staff to look at getting projects shovel-ready. And so that means that we're investing town funds in design and engineering and right-of-way acquisition so that we can be more competitive to get grant funding. So this is a good example of how we're, you know, following that framework.
Yeah, and I do believe the lap funding that was awarded for this project, having the town done the design and engineering and working on that made it, you know, score higher in the lap funding to be able to get it for the right-of-way acquisition and the construction.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, Danielle, and congratulations on your promotion. I think, I know we have two PhDs, I know Officer Pready and now you're a PhD. So I want to, you know, I'm very happy looking at this project because I want the people to know that the money that we have allocated, Martha, correct me, this is from the quarter, like a one-cent tax that we had put for transportation projects, all that money came from that particular bucket.
So yes, your transportation reserve is being used to provide the additional funds necessary at this point for the project.
Yeah, and that's the best part that I like about it because these are the kind of projects where we are, you know, it is getting used for. And I'm assuming the 744 will also come from the same bucket.
The 744 is that 694 plus some street payment and lieu and then there's interest earned in those monies in the reserves, but 90% of it is from that fund.
Awesome. And I'm very proud of our council to, you know, take that initiative and put money towards the transportation project. This is wonderful. The only thing I, if you go back to the first slide, you know, where you show, yes, this one, I'm not seeing anywhere, how much is the distance, you know, between that this road is, you know, like that I know you have idea of how, is it a half a mile or a mile? I'm like clueless on, like other than being, you know, showing us a map here.
That is a very good question. I kind of want to hope this was like a Google Maps and I can right-click and then do a and I can right-click and, and then do a quick measure tool. I'm, I'm happy to get that for you. It, you know, it's something, it's, it's less, definitely less than a mile on that. But I, I'm happy to take a look at the plans and get that exact mileage for you.
All right, that would be very helpful, because, because I couldn't see that data here. And the other question I wanted to ask is, the cost close to $10 million, you know? I'm just comparing it with Marshall Carpenter extension that we are doing. That's also close to 10. Is it because this is all new? And I'm trying to compare both projects, you know? Like, what are we, we know what we're getting here, and, and what are we getting here? Like, is it, where is, where is the money getting spent most?
Yeah, and I, I think part of it is that it is completely new road construction. We also do have some right-of-way acquisition in there, which is, is costing a little bit of money, mostly because land values are, are so high these days. You know, we aren't doing significant amounts of land acquisition for this, because there was some right-of-way already dedicated for it. But I would say some of that has to do with the right-of-way acquisition, because we are looking at probably something just under $2 million for that, which has an impact. And then, yeah, mentioning as well, it is completely new, you know, new road.
And you bring a good point. I was under the assumption when we were given the first presentation that the right-of-way was already dedicated. And you're, you know, you're saying we're spending a significant amount of money on the right-of-way. That's kind of a little odd. I felt like, you know, when this project was initially started, the right-of-way was dedicated, and they didn't want to build it. And we basically took, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, because I remember like that conversation where I think Benjamin said this right-of-way was already there in place.
Yeah, and so there are little, especially say at Town Hall Drive and where it's going to intersect with Airport Boulevard, there are some turn lanes that were not necessarily accounted for in perhaps the original 100-foot-wide right-of-way. So there are things at some of the intersections, and then a little bit, for example, going between the two schools, a little bit of an alignment adjustment. So there are little snippets of, in some cases, right-of-way that's maybe needed, or that's needed in places. Same thing with on, on Church Street, with some of the turn lanes that are going there. And this also does go to make the, we don't, we did not have any, at the very end of Church Street, the right-of-way dedication of that 100 feet, similar to a little bit more towards the west, in which it was dedicated with the, the plating of those subdivisions. So there is a, a little bit more, there's kind of whole properties on, on the very end side of Church Street, which, which do need to be acquired.
Okay, so, so to be fair, like, you know, there was a good amount of right-of-way dedication. So I wanted to ensure that that is highlighted, and this is like more for turn lanes and other areas that we are going to spend, because that's, we were so saying that, hell, we have this, all we had to do is build the road. So that, that was, okay.
Yeah, so more so little pieces, little pieces here and there, but high land cost.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So I just have a couple of questions. On the slide for project funding, in the bullet under right-of-way acquisition, that second bullet where it's approx, its future, approximately $1.4 million 50/50 supplemental fund request. But on the previous slide, it said 85% of the right-of-way eneasements have been required. So can you help me, what's the 1.4 million?
Yeah, and so this is in terms of NC DOT. They are doing all of the right-of-way acquisitions, so where they have done, secured the agreements or the deeds, and, and done all of that work. We are not being billed for each individual one as they come along. So it is kind of, what this is accounting for is, with this kind of future approximate, is looking at the total package of what will, what are we sort of expecting when it's all finalized to where that number will be? And I don't know if that helps. We have a, you know, we know that this is going to be closer to the 1.4 million, just based on where, where the project is in right-of-way acquisition. There is a few, you know, other ones that could be, you know, impacted, but generally, it's looking at, once it's finalized, what will the total amount be? I don't know if that helped explain it or not.
Yeah, it does. That makes sense. And then my second question has to do with the, the original grant was 3.88 million, and then they're going to need, it's going to need to go up to 5.6 million. And you, you mentioned going, you know, a request for supplemental funds. Is that, is it to address that gap?
It is, and so what CAMPO allows, I've had some discussions with them. They do allow, because of different changes in cost factors, and I guess I can, I'll address the construction one first and what they normally do, so there aren't multiple requests coming in, is they do require that you have your bid for construction to know what that final amount is going to be. And then we can go back and ask for what they call the 50/50 supplemental funds to address that gap. And that is what we are, you know, that is an option that's available. They do have sort of a pot of money that's set aside to address these types of things. They are seeing lots of requests just based on construction cost increasing everywhere. And we can also do the same thing separately for the right-of-way acquisition, because it has, it's, it's going to, it's already exceeded, you know, already exceeded what was anticipated for that. So we can, once those are finalized, we know that final number. We can go back to CAMPO and ask for that 50/50 supplemental funds.
All right, what's the chances that they do not approve that request?
Yeah, and so normally, they have not had any issues in the past with being able to accommodate those. There are a large number of requests coming in. What I've been told is there, should they receive many large requests and the pot of money run out, there may be a year in which they decide not to do any lap, like new lap program agreements, and then that pot of money is used to help supplement the funds for the existing projects. So there are things that they are thinking about, should it come to that situation. Right now, it does not appear that that would be the case, but, you know, and having those conversations and, and making sure we don't kind of end up in that situation. And generally, anything, a request under $1 million for their portion does not have to go to the executive board. It's a staff-level approval. If it's over $1 million, it does go through the CAMPO Executive Board for approval.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
So I, I've got a couple of comments, and then a little heartburn issue that I think I know the answer to, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. But just to, to, to go off of what Councilmember Fender just said, CAMPO has been really good to work with on this project so far. And I know you have been integral in, in those conversations. So I would hope that they work with us, but I think that's a really valid question to ask about the, the 50/50 match moving forward. So I'm, I'm going to go with, they've been a great partner to this point, and I, I believe they will be moving forward too. So, but I, I also want to make a comment about what Councilmember Garamella said about the right-of-way. We were really fortunate back in the day when Town Hall Commons was approved, that that, that right-of-way was dedicated. I, I really hate to think what our right-of-way costs would be with that, because that's a major, that's more than half of this project. So I'm, I'm really happy. Staff at the time was very smart about that, and council too, and, and the developer too. I don't remember that being a huge pushback, quite frankly. And there were lots of reasons for that too, but, but anyhow. So right-of-way. And then I also want to kind of go off of something Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson said about the fact that we like to have these shovel-ready projects so that we can get them constructed. I think it's really important to, to always say when we talk about this project, about why this project is so important, because it really is kind of along those lines, where this project not only is so important for, right now, the connection that it'll offer to Church Street, but it's really important for the next phase, which is to do the connection all the way over to Airport Boulevard. And, and all along, and I know we've talked about this at various times in this project, but not everybody always follows this conversation like we all do. But early on, we knew that it was really important, this project was really important, so that funding would come for that next piece, which is going to be incredibly expensive, because it will, it will be a flyover to Airport Boulevard. And so, so anyhow, I, I don't want to lose that in this conversation. And that goes to the, the notion of this planning ahead and being proactive and designing things to get funding. Well, it's also get projects done so we can get to the next level of funding for the next piece. So I think that's important to, to say. And then the, the piece that gives me a little heartburn, and, and I think I know the answer, and I think you even alluded to it, Danielle, but I'm going to ask again anyhow. I'm not really happy about giving the money upfront now, six months prior to them, maybe going forward in June. So make me feel better about the fact that we're going to hand over several million dollars, and maybe we're going to let the project in June. And is there any alternative? And I, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask anyhow.
Yes, and, and so I have had conversations with NC DOT about, you know, for example, if for some reason we decide to not do the project once we've executed the construction agreement, once we've given them funding, we would get, any funding not spent would be returned. So if all they did was, you know, just do some administrative work on it, and it covered a little bit of that cost, but essentially, they are holding it in, I'm going to call it, holding it in reserve to be able to pay for this cost along the way. And the difference too is, for example, if the, you know, the bid amount is slightly different, there is sort of that balancing at the end as well, with the, you know, if it's a little bit more or a little bit less, and, and whether it's funds returned or extra funds that go out. But it is something that, similar, if you kind of think it's similar to the STIP, and when NC DOT is doing a project and they have a pot of money, and this money has to be here in order for this project to move forward. So it is, in this case, instead of NC DOT's pot of money, it is ours in order for that project to move forward. So they, they also need sort of certain security that, you know, money is there to pay for what they'll be doing. But like I said to you, if for some reason it's decided, the project's not going forward, the funds would be returned.
Okay, and just to, you know, really be clear, I'm not worried about us and our end of things. I am, I'm deeply concerned about them and their end of things. And I, I hate to say that, but they have had so many projects that they push. And so I, it makes me concerned to hand over so much money to maybe we're going to start approximately in June.
Yeah, and I will say, one of, one of the current holdups has been some of the right-of-way acquisition, lots of deeds of trust, which is take, takes a bit of time for them to work through. I've been in some, some different phone calls with regard to kind of the status of, of the project, and trying to hear some of those issues. So as long as the right-of-way acquisition is able to get wrapped up by the end of December, this would be the current timeline. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, yes, I do understand the concern with that. Just, yeah, just a few other things. And many of the projects, yeah, the timelines have been, have been getting pushed out. So I do understand the concern there.
Councilmember Ralph.
Excuse me. Just a, an observation, I don't really have any specific, I want to thank you for a very, very concise and thorough presentation. I just think that something to think about is, maybe at some time, you know, the staff could, or we could coordinate a, a meeting with our congressional delegation, particularly Congresswoman Ross, who just got re-elected her second term. Because over the last couple of years, she's gotten very plugged in with, she had success getting us money for our Small Business Recovery Program. Don't know, I've researched the ARP funding. It's so confusing. Most of it's going in transit. It's just for her to know of the projects that we're working on and the pipeline of projected costs so that she might be able to advocate as someone that represents Morrisville in the district, the second congressional district, whether there could be opportunities. So just an ask of something we can think about. Of course, we don't know where, where the Congress will be, whether it's going to be run by the opposing party, because right now, I don't know how that's going to affect. But I just noticed she's been very effective in already building a lot of really good relationships, both within the Democratic leadership and the Republican leadership. So just a thought.
Thank you. And I'll also mention too, hopefully sometime by next summer, we'll have the opportunity to start contributing new projects to the, to CAMPO, to be filtered into the STIP. That has been one of the challenges as well. No new projects really accepted in the last several years.
Not seeing any other questions. You're looking for some actions this evening. Could you put those, that language up on the screen for us?
I do have just this requested action. Was there anything else I needed to put up, or?
As long as just reading this one, we'll do the resolution first, take a vote, and then do the ordinance. Just reading as it's read right there.
I think that would be good with that. Is that good for you, Eric?
Okay, I'm getting a nod from all around. Okay, I entertain a motion. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
I put a motion to approve Resolution 2022-423-0, authorizing execution of the NC DOT construction agreement for Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1.
Yep, that's good.
Both is two different.
That, that's it to start. Waiting for a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. Would you like to do the second one too, Councilmember Garamella?
I put a motion to approve Capital Project Ordinance Amendment 2022-423-0, allocating an additional $774.35 for the construction of the Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0 as well. That's good, Rich. Thank you very much, principal planner. Excellent, that's good work. And I was very glad that Mayor Pretem pointed out the fact that this is part of a larger project, the grade separation over 54 in the railroad, which is so important. That's our future, another additional way to get across town, which is really important. We're at item 12 now, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. There is a few of them. This Friday morning, the Morrisville Veterans Day Celebration will begin at 10:00 a.m. at Indian Creek Trailhead, 101 Town Hall Drive. The event will honor veterans who live in Morrisville and those who work for the town of Morrisville. Brigadier General Retired Johnny Clinton, the commander of the Lowes Grove American Legion Post 416, is scheduled to be the keynote speaker. Parking will be available at Town Hall, 100 Town Hall Drive. A note, if there is rain on Friday, the Veterans Day Celebration will be moved to the Bay Area Fire Station 1, which is located at 200 Town Hall Drive. As always, the Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food and goods from small and local businesses from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 p.m. every Saturday. to see a complete list of local vendors and shop local. At the November 12th Market, the beautiful Together Animal Sanctuary will be holding an adoption event with dogs and cats available for adoption. At the November 19th Market, there will be a Fall Harvest Festival and Craft Fair with arts and crafts vendors in addition to the farmer lineup.[1709.37] Morrisville youth are invited to enter the Stormwater Photo Contest. We're calling on all amateur high school age photographers. Help us achieve our goal of increasing public education regarding stormwater. You can showcase your talents and win a gift card by entering the 2022 Town of Morrisville Stormwater Photo Contest. This year's theme is, "We Are All Downstream." The deadline for entries is Wednesday, November 30th. See our website or social media channels for information and an entry form. Wake County Public Health is sponsoring free COVID-19 vaccination clinics throughout the region. On November 16th and 30th, vaccine clinics will be offered at the Western Health and Human Services Center at 111 James Jackson Avenue in Cary from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. No appointment is required. Vaccines are available to adults and children free of charge. No identification or insurance is needed. And you can, uh, get details from that at the Wake County website or on our social media. Morrisville Police versus Fire Turkey Bowl Two will be on November 19th. This is a fun event. You can come watch the Morrisville Police and Fire Departments face off in a game of kickball on Saturday, November 19th at 10:00 a.m. at Morrisville Community Park, 1520 Morrisville Parkway. I was just speaking to one of the firefighters earlier today and I was asking if they've been practicing. He said, "We don't need to practice." So there's a little bit of, uh, gamesmanship going on there. To attend, you only need to bring one non-perishable Thanksgiving food item. Enjoy a great game while supporting those in need. Uh, residents are invited to complete a survey on Morrisville Parks before November 30th. The Town of Morrisville Community Enhancement Team wants your input on which parks and amenities are the most important to you. Your feedback may be used to influence maintenance practices at various parks and greenways across Morrisville this winter. We appreciate any time you can provide in answering the survey, which can be found on our social media. The survey will close on November 30th. On Friday, December 2nd, join us at Indian Creek Trailhead on Town Hall Drive as we kick off the holiday season with our Town of Morrisville Tree Lighting. It, the event will be at 6:00 p.m. Santa Claus and the Town Council will be counting down the lighting of the tree, followed by some fun and entertainment. Trader Joe's will be there with seasonal beverages to share. Limited parking will be available in the Town Hall parking lot and a shuttle will be running from Cedar Fork Community Center, and we're encouraging people to use the shuttle. And one last thing, please mark your calendar for Thursday, December 8th, which will be our Winter White Goods Collection Day. So that's a lot. If you ever want the full listing of events, please see our town calendar at townofmorrisville.org. This time, we're moving on to, uh, council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
I have no comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson.
Uh, just a couple of comments, Mayor. First of all, I want to recognize Karen Moran from Wake County Human Services, who's here with us this evening. Um, I want to thank, uh, the Fire Department for the fire ladder. Um, although I'm scared of heights, it was really great to be up there. Uh, thank you, Chief Riddell and team for doing that. Um, I want to, the Solarize Triangle Team is being recognized, nominated this evening for a Klink Tech Cluster Innovation Award. I wish we could have been there, but I'm very proud of everything we're doing. Want to congratulate, um, Senator Lake Dycock, Representative Lake Yalu, Congressman-elect Wiley Nickel, um, and welcome the new Wake County Commissioners, Don Mile and Cheryl Stalling. And there's a number of races, but want to just thank everyone for running, glad the election's over. And, um, hopefully we can reassess our legislative strategy now that, um, the Senate is back to a super majority, so we can talk about that maybe in another work session. And, um, looking forward to Veterans Day. Finally, I just want to, um, uh, thank, um, Mayor Pretem Liz Johnson and her family for, uh, care of her mother and, and just all of the leaders that help, um, pancreatic cancer awareness. I think it's just great to see the Pan Can Network so, um, aggressive in raising awareness. And also, um, I think it's great we had a long awareness proclamation as well today. So, um, that's all I've got and, um, looking forward to a, a good, uh, work session on affordable housing.
Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So, thank you Steve for saying that. I appreciate it. There's a whole lot of people that are involved in that, um, in the Pan Can organization here locally. And I wasn't going to say this, but as long as we're talking about that, we do raise awareness, but I'm really proud of this group of volunteers that has raised now upwards to $3 million for research and funding. And a lot of that money stays right here at some of the research facilities at UNC Chapel Hill Leinberger Cancer Center and at NC Central too, where there are labs, um, doing research into pancreatic cancer. So, so thank you for that. I, I just have two quick questions or two quick comments. One, um, we, we talked about the many veterans events that are coming up here. The town has an event on Friday, and of course, our Morrisville Veterans Foundation has their 5K Walk on Saturday morning, and I really urge everyone to register. Even if you cannot attend on Saturday, if you want that T-shirt, you need to register. And the T-shirts are really, I've not seen them in person, but I've seen the design, and it really is a nice T-shirt. So if you want to be the proud owner of, uh, Morrisville Veterans Foundation's first ever 5K Walk, um, please register. And that information where you can register is all over our social, social media accounts for the town, um, and also on the Morrisville Veterans Foundation, uh, Facebook page. So, uh, urge everyone to do that, especially council, please. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say, only because we spent some time with the Fire Department, I hate to single out any, um, department, like, um, like a mother of children, you love them all, um, but the council got to spend some time with the Fire Department prior to our meeting tonight, and I really just want to thank the Fire Department for, um, all they do for the citizens and for our safety here in the town of Morrisville. They are a first-rate Fire Department, and I have said this before, I, hands down, they are the best Fire Department, and I would put them up against any other Fire Department. So, um, I just want to say thank you to them. That's it. Thank you.
Well said. Uh, Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Skargen Johnson.
Yeah, I, I echo what Liz said, you know, we are ISO one. When Vindell just got their ISO one, he said, ah, you know, we already have it. So, but, um, uh, I think I'm looking forward, uh, I, I would actually certainly get the T-shirt. I will not do the 5K, but, um, looking forward for the Memorial Day on Thursday.
Councilmember Skargen Johnson, please.
So it's hard to come near the end because all the good things have been taken, but I do want to, um, say that the memorial, First Annual Veterans Memorial Walk should be a great event. We are expecting a little rain perhaps due to her, no, no, no.
Not gonna happen.
If, if a hurricane turns a certain way, then maybe, but, um, you should definitely, um, join us. And, um, I will publicly say that I've already registered. So I think, um, it's a very important event to me personally. My dad was a veteran, um, he was in Marine Corps, and I feel like this is a very important event for our town and for everyone involved. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, I'll go next, followed by Councilmember Robati. I also registered, so I'm looking forward to it as well. I want to say congratulations to all of us in Wake County on the approval of the Wake School Bonds and the Wake Tech Bonds. And thank you to the many candidates who put themselves out there on the ballot for our consideration and for the countless volunteers promoting democracy here in our local area, especially the poll workers for both early voting and Election Day. That's a lot of really hard work. Thank you to staff in the chamber for the state of Morrisville and to our staff for our Green Day event. I was sorry to miss them this year. Uh, Councilmember Robati.
Uh, yes, I agree with, um, the mayor's comment about the poll workers. I did want to give a shout out to, um, our poll captain at the Mighty O507, Laura Aslan, who did an amazing job yesterday at the polls and was there from 6:15 a.m. to 7:30, 7:45 p.m. Everybody did a great, great job on Tuesday. Thank you all. Um, I also registered for the Veterans Memorial Walk. Um, I unfortunately am going to be at home taking care of my own veteran, Sergeant, uh, Charles Robati, former USMC who had knee surgery on Monday. So I probably not going to be able to leave him alone yet by Saturday. Um, but if one of the kids will babysit him, I will be there and really looking forward to that event. And it's so great to see how far the Veterans Memorial Committee has been able to take this Veterans Memorial Project. We were talking about it for years and years and years, and to see it really becoming something is just amazing. I'm really excited about that event.
Excellent. I'd like to recognize Town Manager Page for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the first one is, is just a logistical thing for your next item, uh, or for your next meeting on November 22nd. We continue, you know that we've changed out how we're recording, uh, our meetings. As a part of that process, we continue to look at the audio and sound quality. So beginning at our next meeting, we are going to be outfitting you with lavalier microphones rather than the microphones you have at your places. And we'll be here to help assist you. And of course, the most important thing is leave them here before you go home. Uh, but it will really dramatically help the sound quality for people that are either listening or coming back to watch, um, events. Uh, thank you for those of you that have already given us some, uh, potential retreat locations. If you haven't, I'll take them at your next break, please. Also have left you with a draft, an updated draft, uh, calendar of meetings for 2023. Just a quick, uh, summary, because we have lots of options we talked about last time. This one really narrowed down work sessions in some months on the Thursday that follows your second Tuesday meeting. That is not always the fourth Thursday, which is why I'm saying that. It is two work sessions more than our current year, both of which are directly linked to our ability to deliver to you budget expectations. One of those is leading into a retreat in January, and the other one is one in April. There is one less budget workshop in May slash June, uh, that we think aligns well with that request. Um, happy to see nods if this calendar's okay. If it's, if other people still have questions, I can follow up following the meeting. This is something that'll come to you in your December meeting.
I guess I just had one question about having no work sessions slated for October or November, just as a placeholder, because sometimes it seems like it's easier to have one and then get rid of it, but just your thoughts.
So did not have one in October, or November, last year, November or December. October, we intentionally left off this time because some of you will be campaigning, candidly. So we did not think that that would be a good time to hold a work session.
Thank you on behalf of those of us who'll be campaigning. Or poll grading, or?
So Nick, one, one, one comment, suggestion, question. Um, I, why no workshop in July instead of August? Is there a reason? It seemed like we, at least this year, we had them kind of flowing alternate months. Maybe I'm.
It was alternate months. You did not have one in July. You had one in August this year.
Yeah. July was August. We never had.
No, I know that, but, um, but if we look at this calendar, you know, we have May and then we have none in June and July. And what I'm saying is, would it make sense to have one in July and not August? So we're on that every other month. Um, that's my only.
So June, we did not, we do not think we would need additional budget work sessions, but if you need them, they would come in June.
I mean, this, I'm, I'm going to give a nod to the calendar. For personal reasons, I'm, in addition to business travel, some, my schedule's getting a little bit unpredictable. Hoping that changes, but if I can't make a work session, I'll just let you know. But hard for me to commit all these dates.
Yeah, that happens for all of us. Understood.
Yeah. One of the things we did attempt to do is, is clearly identify the budget deliverable with some of those. It would also be where your roundtable discussions would come. So as you can see, many of them are already sort of spoken for. And then you've got a couple major topics, one which you're going to talk about in a few minutes. Town center continues that that's what those types of sessions would be for.
So looking again for some nods for staff.
Helpful to review. I like this format.
Thank you. I'll, I'll press my advantage. We have received, and I mentioned this, we have received a, uh, invitation inquiry from the Town of Apex to host a joint meeting. They've given us two options. Um, August 29th, which is actually the week before Labor Day, we do not have a meeting that week, uh, and their, their schedule is similar to ours. And October 31st, which of course is Halloween. Do not have to consider that now, but they are wanting to lock that in if that is something that council's interested in doing.
Okay. So we have a work session scheduled on the 24th and then the 22nd, so that's kind of tight in there, but I would prefer that one instead of Halloween if those are the two choices personally. Other thoughts?
I think Halloween is an event that, for all ages, but it's also very close to the election, so that might not be a favorable for any of the individuals that might be campaigning. So August is definitely.
And what about Cary? It's been like forever, we never heard back from her.
Yeah. Uh, Sean has indicated the town clerk would be in touch. That just has not occurred.
Okay. So we don't have any dates for it?
I don't have any dates for Cary.
Does anyone have any concerns with us, uh, giving Town Manager a direction to go ahead and tentatively say the 29th is good in August to meet with Apex? I think your advantage is pressed.
Thank you. And the last item I gave you was some information on an inquiry from Wake County for, uh, support regarding some extended and lengthy discussions that they're having with RDU about use of land proximate to Lake Crabtree. Um, if there's general support, it's not a budget decision for us. I am trying to give you the context of what they potentially sought. If we need to talk about this more, you could do so in a closed session. We would need to do that with attorney-client privilege when you would choose to do that. Um, I could also follow up with you individually if you prefer that way. You, you do have several hours ahead of you still this evening.
I'm wrong.
Several hours.
Call it, call it two.
Two plus a closed session already on the schedule.
So I think I'd suggest, um, we, I don't want to put anyone necessarily on the spot about supporting or not supporting at this time. Maybe we can add that as a closed session when we get to that point, and then we can just try to make it really quick whether or not we support, don't support, or need in more information about the RDU items. Does that sound like a plan forward?
I don't want to say how much time we want to allocate for that item yet. I haven't even read fully the brief.
Right.
Am I? So yes to the closed session.
So I say yes to the closed session. I do have questions whether it's tonight or follow-on, but yes.
Maybe that could be the last closed session item, and if we get to it, we get to it? Is the timing urgent?
They are seeking some information by their work session next week, which is the time sensitivity. Um, when you go into closed session, please include the reference citation for attorney-client privilege in addition to the property acquisition. You can choose not to hold it at that point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from staff, ma'am? Nope, okay. Sounds good. We are at, um, item 14, our work session for this evening. We have one work session tonight, an Affordable Housing Plan implementation, implementation preliminary design discussion. Danielle Kittredge, principal planner, will facilitate the work session. Staff has requested remain at the dais for this discussion. Even though it's a work session, it's going to flow a little bit better to pretty much hear the presentation, and then she'll help us with the discussion.
Are we going to take a break?
Um, we're not scheduled to take a break. We're, uh.
As long as this session's going to last.
Because we kind of just took one. Is there a good breaking point somewhere within?
Um, we, there's, yeah, there'll be two main items that are kind of discussed, and so, um, if we wanted, um, there's up to two hours allocated for the work session. It's a very dense material. Um, if we want to time check halfway through and then, um, figure out if a break is needed.
So around nine, do a time check, depending on how the flow is going?
Yes.
Is that acceptable for the council?
I say we have a break at nine.
Okay. Let's shoot for a break at nine.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Great. So I'm here to introduce the, um, work session that we're having tonight, and it is for the Affordable Housing Plan Implementation. Um, it's some preliminary design options to get your feedback on tonight and to help us with next steps. So just as a reminder, um, in fall of 2019, the town did adopt an Affordable Housing Plan. And then in early 2021, as a town council retreat, there was some, um, discussions about some of the options that were shown in the plan, and there was preference to, um, explore Public Employee Housing Choice Program, as well as to kind of develop a toolkit of, um, UDO incentives for affordable housing. So based on that feedback, uh, staff went out with an RFQ, um, to get a consultant to help us look at some of these, um, options. We did have to go through a little bit of a process for that, but in, um, early 2022, we were able to select HR and A advisors to help us with what we're calling a two-phase project. Um, the first phase is really looking at, um, sort of an evaluation of what are, what are the possibilities to do, and then phase two is actually, um, taking those options or anything that's selected and actually, um, implementing it or, or writing it up. So, uh, this was just a kind of, uh, short timeline explaining all of that information, um, where we're sort of at in the process, and, um, we're kind of in the fall 2022 right now. We've gone to, um, planning board with the UDO incentive options, so that'll be woven a little bit throughout the discussion as well, some of the feedback that we did hear from them. And then looking at, um, phase two, any types of, um, implementation in accordance with Town Council's direction to happen, um, early next year, potentially depending on, um, the feedback or, or direction that we do receive tonight. So I do want to break out and kind of set the stage a little bit for what we're hoping for in this, uh, work session. Uh, there are two items that we'll be focusing on. The first will be the Public Employee Housing Choice Program, which hopefully maybe we'll accomplish before, um, accomplish before nine o'clock. For this, there was a survey that was conducted with town staff, as well as select schools that serve Morrisville kids, and some of that information helped to feed some of the different options and understanding some of that background information. So we were looking at some high-level program options that could be available, and what we'll be looking at is some feedback on those options that are presented, whether there is consensus, whether there are things to take off the list, whether there are just something completely alternative to look at as well. So that's what we are hoping to do with that item, and we'll try to maybe reiterate through, throughout to, you know, if we need some different feedback points and trying to get that as well. And the second item is the UDO incentives. We looked at things from the perspective of single-family options and a perspective of multifamily options, so there can be some decision points with those two. And again, we're looking at, based on the information that HRNA was able to pull together and sort of understanding where, where the most, you know, where the most benefit could be for some of the different options, just getting some feedback on that as well. So of course, there's the options to select any of the incentives to proceed with further, look at something different, or decide not to do anything at all. Something else I did want to mention is just to kind of have in, in mind is the FY24 budget timeline. This would mostly, this would impact Public Employee Housing Choice Program. If there's something that's interested in pursuing that, some things to keep in mind timeline-wise is, we do start to formulate things in December, some preliminary, you know, budget items, but really, they, they get finalized by late February, early March to be able to have into that, into that packet. And I just wanted to mention that for some, kind of, as, as we're discussing things, and if for some reason both kind of programs are decided to move forward with, and if something needs to move a little faster or slower than the other, but having that context as well. And just two other things before I do introduce HRNA, who will be leading the majority of the presentation tonight, is, you know, based on what types of feedback we do receive, if there isn't, you know, certain consensus or direction on different things, we will take the information, strategize next best steps if it is additional discussions or other ways to address that. So I did want to bring that up. And then there may be some items too that come up. We're going to maybe formulate sort of this parking lot idea. If there are different ideas coming, coming out too, and things we might need to look at a little bit more, we might pool things, pool things to what we're calling a parking lot as well. We do realize this is a very, could be very complicated, a very dense discussion, and, you know, there's no, you know, perfect solution to everything, so there may be a variety of discussion that happens and trying to capture all of that in kind of our, our time that's allotted tonight as well. So with that, I do want to introduce Sarah Kirk, who's with HRNA. She'll be doing the presentation and helping walk through some of the preliminary analysis that was done for these and to kind of facilitate some of that discussion. Michelle and I will be down at the table as well to be able to, you know, participate or add extra things as needed, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you so much, Danielle, for that very helpful overview of what we're trying to accomplish today. So as Danielle mentioned, we have a lot to cover today, but really want to have a productive conversation with you all about where you want to take the, this, these two potential affordable housing programs and how we can help to facilitate some informed decision-making for you. So I'm going to give you a brief overview, kind of repeat a little bit of what Danielle said, but talk a little bit about what, what we've been engaged to do, give brief updates on preliminary feasibility and potential design for both the Housing Choice Program or the Public Employee Housing Choice Program and the incentive zoning policy, and then talk a little bit about where we go from here. As Danielle said, my name is Sarah Kirk. I'm a principal with HRNA Advisors. I'm based in Raleigh and have done a fair amount of work on affordable housing plans and program design, both here in Wake County and around the country. HRNA is working on phase one of two to support the implementation of two major recommendations that came out of Morrisville's Affordable Housing Plan, as Danielle laid out. So currently, we're in the process of evaluating potential policy options and scenarios for both a public employee housing choice program, which included, among other things, a survey of town and school system employees serving Morrisville, and a review of the UDO and identification of potential ways to offer incentives for developers to provide affordable housing. So this is a way to incentivize the development of affordable housing without the town putting any money into it. Based on the feedback that we get from council, we'll work with the town to finalize the framework for both of those, or one, or however you want to proceed, and come back with a sort of a recommended design. And then phase two would be sort of the development of, you know, actual administrative processes, UDO changes, and similar regulatory and design processes in order to implement one or both programs. So starting with the Housing Choice Program, Morrisville's plan speaks very directly to the town's desire to ensure that public employees have opportunities to live affordably in the community that they serve. The town notes that some public employees may struggle to be homeowners in Morrisville due to higher home values in the town, and as you'll see, there's also a large number of lower-income renters, particularly amongst public school employees that serve Morrisville as well. So in order to gauge interest in different types of support for public employees, we worked with the town to design a survey to understand the housing choices that people had made, who, I'm sorry, this is a survey of town employees and school system employees that work at or primarily serve schools for Morrisville students. So we designed this survey to understand the housing choices people had made, their income and housing situations, and potential preferences to live in Morrisville, and interest in potential sources of assistance. Got a pretty good response rate, particularly from town employees, and I should say this was limited to full-time employees or employees working 30 hours or more for the town. The school system, we had slightly lower response rate, in part because the survey went out about two weeks after the end of school, school year, but nonetheless heard from a large number of school system employees. There was relatively high interest in a program to help public employees live in Morrisville. I'll say, overall, we had 77% of respondents were interested in some form of assistance, but we'll talk a little bit more about what we heard. So first of all, who did we hear from? The majority of people that we heard from had public sector incomes, that's the income from their town or school system job, between $35,000 and $75,000 a year. Almost all of them were full-time employees, again, because that's who it was sent to, and the average public tenure was a little over six years. You can see, we heard from people with a broad range of incomes, particularly the school system. I will say, the income skewed a little bit lower, and we had a lot more respondents with incomes below 50 and below $75,000. But in general, and this, I should say, this is the household income, so this is income from their public sector job, as well as any other jobs that members of the household might have. The majority of the people we heard from, about two, half were homeowners, but within the town, a higher percentage were homeowners. And in general, people's housing costs were between $1,000 and $3,000 in a month. That's all, all of their housing, all of their housing costs, including utilities and things like that. And, you know, owners' housing costs skewed a little bit higher, but in general, whether they were owning or renting, pretty much in that range. Couple of things that stood out to us when we saw the responses were, a relatively large number, over 60% of respondents said that they cited cost as a factor that could potentially entice them to move to Morrisville. So, you know, you can understand, there's some people who, because of, you know, where their spouse works, where their kids go to school, or, or other commitments, maybe they're just never going to want to live in Morrisville, and that's fine, but trying to understand what that population is that would maybe be interested in moving to Morrisville if they could find a house that would work for them, or if they could find a affordable unit, that, that was a relatively high percentage. And again, more than half of respondents indicated a plan to potentially move in the next couple of years, so this is indication that we might see some interest in a program to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, finish your thought. I'm sorry.
Indication that we might see some interest in a housing assistance program for public employees in the next few years.
Just Sarah, how many, how many overall respondents were there? I mean, you talk about percentages, but how many actual responses did you get back?
I think we had about 200-something responses.
Uh, 275.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
No, no, thank you for asking.
That would help me as we're looking at these figures. That's why.
And this is a work session, so I do want to make sure that I'm pausing for, for comment and question throughout.
275 overall response.
Overall, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Got a question. What is the factor of just picking town employees and Wake County Public School? You know, we have Wake Tech here, and we have, you know, EMS, which supports, or Wake County employees who live in Morrisville. So I just wanted to understand that, why only these two sets?
Absolutely, and there's lots of ways to define the people who serve the community, even if you can think about, you know, retail workers who provide critical services for Morrisville residents. The universe of town, full-time town employees and school system employees in Morrisville was a very specific set of people that we understood had come out of, I think, the council retreat.
Yeah, and I'm happy to address this as well. I know there was a variety of interest in, you know, maybe a pilot program to begin, but to have a set of public employees that we could actually send a survey out to and get some feedback is why those two were selected as, as maybe the, the two areas in which a pilot could be started.
I, I think Wake Tech should have been included because that campus is on Morrisville property. I mean, I know there's a lot of campuses, but there's a lot of schools as well, so thanks.
And certainly, if we were to move forward with a pilot program, we could consider Wake Tech employees as, you know, eligible under that. We just, they weren't included in the survey.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Well, you want to get to the next presentation, then I can come back. How much longer?
Up to you, if you want to ask a question now or wait.
Oh, yeah, just, just a point. During the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, which I attended on this issue, and you did a great job presenting that as well, one of the board members made a good point about this also being an economic, economic development issue, and the fact that, you know, companies like Apple, even the mayor of Austin had warned when we got the big deal with Apple, that affordable housing should be something we considered. So as we continue down this process, will we perhaps be speaking with some of these executives at these companies about how much of affordable housing is important to their expansion plans, recruitment and retention plans for, you know, their workforce?
I will say, that's not necessarily part of the scope that we've been engaged for at the moment, but if we wanted to think about ways to broaden the, broaden the scope of inquiry, I think that might be a good option, item for the parking lot, Danielle?
Yeah, and I'll add that, that could be a good, I'm calling it parking lot item to add, as far as a further investigation of that, and then, you know, something that we can kind of circle back and have more of a conversation on. And one thing, and I know that there, there are any additional questions to go with this, but one thing that I did sort of forget to sort of set up in, in sort of transferring over to Sarah as well, is one thing we might try to do is to go through the entire presentation, jot down some notes as you're going along and asking questions for questions that you may have. I think that'll help time-wise, since we do have a lot of dense material, and did want to bring that up as well, if that's something you guys would be minimal to.
I'll step through the rest of this section, and then we can come back to conversation. The last item to note on summarizing the findings of the survey was just, we asked about potential interest in different types of financial assistance. So when we looked, the chart on the left is interest in rental assistance, the chart on the right is interest in various forms of homeownership programs, so the two blue columns are various types of down payment assistance, one, a more traditional down payment assistance, and one, a shared equity program, and we'll talk a little bit more about what those do, but basically, a shared equity program creates permanently affordable units, where the town or some other investor, a nonprofit typically would actually own a portion of the home in order to, and put, record sort of a permanent affordability covenant on the home. And in green was interest in home repairs, to understand if there were maybe existing homeowners in Morrisville who needed assistance making critical repairs to their homes. There was less interest in that program, but very high interest in down payment assistance across all incomes, particularly those middle incomes of $50,000 to $100,000, which is not in this section, but when we talk about the incentive zoning program, we'll see that those are the households that are really starting to see a crunch in whether or not they can afford to buy a home in Morrisville. They used to be able to, now really they can't. That $100,000 of income is really kind of the, the entry point for homeownership in Morrisville, so anybody below that's going to need assistance. When we looked at rental assistance by income, not surprisingly, there was a lot of interest from those lowest-income employees, less interest as we move up the income scales. So based on case research, based on the survey responses, and based on conversation with town staff, we identified four high-level models for discussion and further evaluation. Now, in the, in the appendix, and if we get into it in discussion, we have some case studies that you can all review, looking at how other towns, both in North Carolina and outside of North Carolina, have handled these types of models, but I want to talk briefly about what each of these is, and a little bit to try and inform some discussion and decision-making around them. So the first is rental assistance, so just providing a monthly subsidy to people, either to the employee directly or to their landlords to help them pay the rent. The second one is flexible renter support, so this is a lot of different kinds of things, but it's basically a low-cost way to connect renters with services to help them stay in their homes more affordably. Down payment assistance, which is providing a grant or a low-cost loan in order to reduce the upfront costs of homeownership to help people make, make a down payment, and ideally not have to pay mortgage insurance, which would then lower their monthly costs as well. And then shared equity homeownership, which I talked about a little bit, it's a way to reduce the cost of homeownership by directly subsidizing land costs, or indirectly by offering sort of low-cost loans in which the town or a nonprofit partner would actually become an investor in the house, sort of underwriting a lower-cost mortgage onto, below the, the primary mortgage in order to reduce that amount and reduce the interest that they're paying. Again, this is a way to create permanently affordable units, and if there's interest in recycle, or potentially recite, a way to recycle funds for future loans, which could also be done through down payment assistance, so we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. So for rental assistance, rental assistance is the best way to provide direct assistance to renters and people who are underhoused, which would be, say, somebody who's living at their sister's house, in order to help build stability. We've seen and will show in the next section that renters below, with incomes below $50,000 of income, struggle to find housing in Morrisville. There really aren't any options for them, and that is, again, a fair share of the employees of the school system in particular. The lowest-income renters who responded to the survey noted significant interest in a rental assistance program, and there's potential that this could be a relatively low-cost, low administrative cost program, because it could be operated directly through the town's payroll or through payments to the school system and administered through their payroll. It would be harder to do that if you were to expand that beyond public employees or to more types of employers.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you administer it through payroll, it's a taxable income, and it could be providing them too much income, and they'd be ineligible for some programs. I, I'm concerned about that methodology.
I think that's a, it's a valid concern. It's something, if we were to pursue this, that we'd need to look into further in terms of different options for how to administer the funds.
It's better to direct pay. To the owner of the property, or never, never touch that money, kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's a very, very good point.
Riskless consequences. Thank you.
In terms of the downsides to a program like this, it is potentially very capital-intensive. It doesn't create any permanent affordability. As soon as funding ends, first of all, the household could be potentially displaced, and, and secondly, that unit is no longer affordable. And finally, landlord acceptance could potentially be a challenge. It would just have to be a, a process, you'd need administrative capacity, if, particularly if you're making payments directly to the landlord, to work out agreements and, and processes to do that. When we looked at sort of what the potential scale of a program like this might be, and this is really based on understanding approximate costs, we have not done this out in detail because we wanted to invite further conversation, but a renter with $50,000 of income would require about $200 a month in order to afford the median rent in Morrisville. So if 30 renter households participated, the program would cost about $72,000 a year, and that would require an ongoing commitment of funds.
Can I? I really think 200 a month is not enough. I, I, just this year, I've heard that landlords are raising rents $300 and $400 a month for the same unit that was leased the year prior, so $200, I think we were looking more like 400 to be, you know, more current.
You may be right. You may be right, this is, we conducted our, most of our market analysis in the spring, and it's been, as everybody knows, a really outlier economy in the last few months.
Right.
So, but I think the, the order of magnitude here is somewhere in the couple of hundred thousand dollars area, I think is what, what we're really trying to get at.
So, are we doing questions?
If we were to move forward with program design, we'd want to really dig into the numbers and make sure that we got them right.
Right, it, it's a very, I mean, every day it's getting worse, right? Every day we're seeing increases. I just don't want this to be sounding so...
Yes. Again, potentially the way that we would, we haven't done this yet, but one potential way to structure the payments would be that the town would commit to pay the difference between what the, the way that rental assistance, rental assistance programs often work is that whoever's paying, some public entity or employer, would be paying basically the difference between what the household can afford to pay, or 30% of their monthly income, and what's called a fair market rent, which is set by HUD. So, that can often lag behind market rents. We could have a conversation with the town about whether we wanted to use fair market rent, or some other, some other figure, but that's, that's approximately the formulation for the rental assistance amount. We're not saying you get $200, go ahead, it's, it's, but this is just kind of looking at, for a particular income level, how much assistance might be needed.
So do you want questions and comments as we go now, or?
I think if, now might be a good time to talk about rental assistance. If we want to talk about rental assistance, the next thing that I'm going to talk about is the flexible renter support, which is the second type of program. So if you have specific questions about rental assistance, I'm happy to talk to, talk to them now, or to kind of keep going through the next options, and then about it more broadly, about all four options. Go on, just go on. Great.
No?
Okay, so for flexible renter support, it's a low-cost option, low administrative needs, and it helps renters build housing and financial stability, particularly for the lowest-income renters. What it doesn't do is address challenges for employees who can't afford their monthly rent. So I'll talk about what exactly it is in a second, but it's very low-cost. It would require an ongoing commitment of funds, but it doesn't fundamentally change the math of I can't afford my monthly rent. What it does, there's a number of different third-party providers, and then there's also the potential to find nonprofit partners in the area to provide financial counseling. But they do things like replace security deposits with a monthly insurance payment. So, I don't have $3,000 to put up first in last month's rent, or a security deposit, but I can now move into a unit because instead of that, I'm paying an extra $10 a month. Or allows people to pay their rent in two payments, instead of one lump payment, if they're living paycheck to paycheck, in order to smooth over their, their checking account. It, there's also a program, LeaseLock, that reports rent payments to credit bureaus in order to help people build credit, in order to borrow funds for, for other, you know, home purchase, or to access financing in other ways. So those, those are the kinds of things that we're talking about when we're talking about flexible support for renters. They're not fundamentally changing what people can afford, but if there are people who are living in precarious or unstable situations, who are barely making their rental payments, it can help to, to sort of ease that burden a little. And then financial counseling would be really partnering with a nonprofit to provide a range of training and counseling to help people set budgets, find, figure out what they can afford in terms of rent, build credit, maybe save towards a down payment, something like that. Those were the two options for renters. The next two are more focused on increasing access to homeownership. So, down payment assistance is the most direct means of incentivizing potential homeowners, or home buyers. It's a really common model of assistance for public entities who want to incentivize or lower the entry point for homeownership for all residents, or for employees only. It's also been a model used by other private and public sector employers. There's a high level of interest from survey respondents, and it could help, the potential if, if, in a hot housing market, if people are having trouble making a competitive offer, if they have a letter saying that they have, you know, whatever, $10,000, $20,000 committed for down payment assistance, it could help them to make a more competitive home purchase offer. So that's kind of a smaller benefit, but something that could potentially, depending on the design, be a benefit of this program. And homeownership helps households build wealth and stability, and generally stay in communities that they're living in. Down payment assistance may not significantly reduce the assets needed for home purchase in Morrisville just because of the high home prices. It would really depend on the level of assistance provided, and that's something that we want to talk with you about today, and, and can continue to work on, if you want to pursue design of this program. And it would require administrative programs, usually would work with a nonprofit partner to administer the program, but it is something potentially, we could talk about the town administering directly. So that's another conversation, sort of as we move forward. A lot of down payment assistance programs offer assistance between $10,000 and $15,000. Some go much higher, particularly in high-cost markets like Wake County. So, you know, potentially for an 80%, a, a household making 80% of the area median income, they might need assistance up to $50,000, $55,000 in order to be able to afford the monthly costs of buying a median home in Morrisville. Partly that's just because there aren't a lot of homes that are available at a price that is affordable to a household with that income level. And median income in Wake County is about $100,000. So when we're talking about a household at 80% of the median income, we're talking about a household making about $80,000 a year. So $10,000 of assistance wouldn't really change who can afford to buy in Morrisville, but it could create an incentive to households in that moderate income level that might be looking at houses in a couple of places. Maybe they're more incentivized to come to Morrisville because they can get an extra $10,000 of assistance. So the, the scale of funding required would really depend on sort of those, some of those policy objectives. And the, it can also be structured, it's one-time assistance to each household. It would require an annual allocation in order to continue the program. These funds can be done as either a grant or a forgivable loan. So you can say, you know, it's forgiven after five years, if you stay in the home, you keep your, the $10,000, or the $20,000, whatever it is. It could also be done as a zero-interest loan, where you're never going to pay interest on that $20,000, $25,000, whatever it is. But when you sell the home, you pay the principal back to us, and so that we can recycle the funds to continue to make loans to, to new home buyers. Shared equity homeownership, this is kind of a complex model. We heard some interest in looking into it, and so we wanted to provide you some options. But I think the short answer is, it's a difficult model to make work from the town's perspective, but there are lots of ways a town could get involved and support shared equity homeownership with a variety of partners, and we're definitely happy to talk to you about what that could look like. Essentially, shared equity homeownership creates permanently affordable units that can serve subsequent employees, now, or subsequent home buyers. Now, generally speaking, we're not going to, if, if an employee were to purchase a home through a shared equity homeownership program, you could record a covenant that basically says, you know, you're required to sell this home to another income-qualified home buyer. It would likely not continue to be sold to a public employee at that point, right? Because the likelihood that they're, that you're kind of constraining the market of who's going to be able to buy their home at that point. It lowers the financing requirements for home buyers, and so therefore it actually serves lower income. So down payment assistance program might help home buyers at 80% of the median income, maybe up to 120% of the median income. Shared equity homeownership could help homeowners with incomes as low as 60% of the median income access homeownership. It's even more capital-intensive and administratively intensive than down payment assistance, and could potentially be more challenging to market to potential home buyers just because it's a little bit less direct, kind of here's your assistance to make your down payment to buy your home. There's a little bit more paperwork involved. The funding amount would vary pretty significantly depending on the model chosen, and the scale is likely to be less than that of a down payment assistance programs. And it's, a one-time commitment of funds would ensure permanent ownership in, or permanent affordability of the home. So, different types of models of shared equity homeownership. There's a community land trust, in which basically a nonprofit organization owns the land and finds a qualified buyer to buy and own the home. So again, when that buyer goes out and then wants to sell their home, the nonprofit retains the, the ownership of the land, and helps them find an income-qualified buyer to buy the home from them. By separating the land value from the building value, you significantly reduce the cost to the home buyer. But again, you also reduce somewhat their ability to build equity in the home, because they're only building the equity in the house, or the building, and not the land. So it would create permanently affordable homes. The town, in this case, would really provide financing to a nonprofit partner. You really wouldn't manage the program yourself, or own the land yourself, but you could provide financing to a nonprofit partner to go out and make purchases of homes for such a program. If you wanted to pursue that, the next step would really be reach out and explore potential opportunities for partnership to advance community land trust model. A second model of shared equity homeownership would be a shared appreciation loan. In this case, basically Morrisville would make a loan below the primary home mortgage that doesn't carry any interest, but appreciates with the value of the home. So, when that home is sold, you get back the initial amount of the loan, as well as a share of the appreciation of that home. It's a way to increase homeownership, help people build wealth. It gives you the opportunity to recycle funds for future home buyers, and it's a way for the town to invest in Morrisville's housing market without owning property. It's financially complex, there's a few models in the country, but I don't know of any that are operated at, well, actually, there's a few that are operated at the municipal level, but not in towns as small as Morrisville. So I think if that were something that the town wanted to explore, we'd have to do a little bit more research to evaluate the feasibility and potential scale of developing a shared appreciation loan program. The final model that we talked about for shared equity homeownership is simply covenant-preserved affordable housing, which isn't actually shared equity, it's just a way of creating permanently affordable homes. Basically, the town would acquire and sell single-family lots, or homes, to mission-aligned developers. And at the point of sale, you limit, record a covenant, making that home affordable at a particular income. So the developer would acquire the property from the town, generally at a discount, and in exchange for which they would agree that after they'd finished fixing up the property, or developing a home, that they would sell it to an income-qualified buyer. So I think that would be a great one if the town either already owns a lot of property, or is otherwise interested in kind of acquiring available property through the various ways that towns acquire property. So those are the three models that we looked at for shared equity homeownership. That's really the end of this section. So, the questions that we're hoping to get from you are a little bit more context about the council's goals and priorities in creating a housing choice program, whether it's initially piloted for public employees, or whether we want to broaden that scope. What questions or concerns you have about a potential program design, thinking about these four options? The challenges you see, and, and which models, if any, you're interested in pursuing further?
Great, that was a lot of dense material. Thanks for bringing us through that. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella first, and then Councilmember Robati, then Councilmember Rau, then Fender. That's a lot, okay?
I've got a couple of questions. One is, when we had the first presentation for affordable housing, I think someone from DC came and gave the presentation. I remember there were close to 800 people under AMI, like 80% AMI. Do we have any new data to support that, or what is the current status? Not...
I can't recall offhand what that number was, from what the prior consultant did. Do we have any current data?
I kind of remember it was around 800, that's what it was, 800 or 600 something, around that range.
I think it's more than that, but we do, we don't have it by area median income bracket, but we do have sort of who lives in Morrisville by their income in dollar amounts, which as I mentioned, kind of corresponds pretty closely to 60%, 80%, etc. Later in the presentation, I can try and skip ahead to it.
The reason I was asking is, like, I know this is a pilot, but holistically, I'm also looking at how many do we really have? Like, it could be like a waiter, you know, who's waiting tables and making the same amount of money. Or, you know, a CNA in a hospital, which makes almost less than that. So I just wanted to ensure, like, you know, pilot is okay, but what are, what is the bigger picture here? So that we don't get into the rabbit hole of just that we are only supporting public employees. I just need it for my, you know, like, own conscious, like, you know, if I'm making the right decision, and like, if people... And then another thing is, how will you pick if you have 300 applications, and only 10 are there, and almost say 20 have the same kind of application? What is your picking criteria for these kind of things?
Yeah, so that's an administrative question that would be developed in Phase 2. There's lots of different approaches. It could be that there's anybody who's a qualified applicant by a particular date. There's a lottery, and you have, you know, if you're, for instance, if it's down payment assistance, you have four months to find a home and get it under contract. Otherwise, the funds get reallocated to somebody else in the lottery. There's a lot of different ways to approach that, but that's an administrative program design question that would be answered if the town elected to move forward.
And, and based on your experience, said you did a lot in Wake County and other areas, what, of the four options, what really worked and best for, in other towns?
Yeah, I'd say most, the most common model that I've seen from a municipal-led, local government-led program is the down payment assistance program. It's a very common model. It's a really easy way for a local government to help support people to buy a home, to build wealth, to build roots in the community. Whether it's forgivable or not, you know, you can operate the program at various levels of, like, various scales, typically through a nonprofit partner. There are a lot of places that do provide rental assistance, but because of the challenge of councils allocating funds in perpetuity, it's really difficult. And so it's usually more provided in sort of an emergency context of, you know, we're going to provide this much rental assistance to households that are facing eviction, to keep them in their homes, so that we're not allocating and, and helping a family move into a home that they won't be able to afford five years from now if the program gets canceled.
And my last question is, from a town point of view, is there anything, Michelle Moore, for you, like, on the UDO, like, you know, or tax incentives that we could give to an apartment complex if they are existing ones? If they are ready to do some kind of, like, a rental assistance? So, what can the town do in reducing their tax, you know, like, whatever the taxes they're paying? And, so that, you know, we're not coming out of that, so we're kind of working that deal out. Is that legal? I don't know, but I'm asking because...
And I have to admit, when you're getting into tax incentives, and what's available, and the legalities of that, it really is getting beyond my area of expertise. Sarah, I don't know if you're aware, but we could parking lot that, and look into it a little bit more as well.
Yeah, the, I know that in North Carolina, you're pretty limited in what you can do in terms of tax, like, abatements, but you can definitely put that in the parking lot.
Yeah, but we certainly have that in, as a town jurisdiction, not the county one, but at least from ours, we can regulate that with the amount of tax that we charge, only for Morrisville. That's, that's where I'm just looking for some tax incentives. Suppose, like, an apartment complex of 300 is paying like $2 million in taxes. And if they give 10 units or something, then we kind of incentivize, okay? You know, so that, it works out.
Again, I think the state puts a lot of limits on what you can do in terms of tax incentives, but we, we can look into it.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rau.
Yeah, so, I'm about to say something so unpopular, but I think we need to, like, take a step back and just realize what we can do and what we can't do in terms of affordable housing in Morrisville. I mean, because I think that for, for affordable housing programs to work, we need either money or inventory. And I really question whether we have an overabundance of either one. I'm not saying that affordable housing isn't important, but I'm saying that as I look at these options... these options and I'm thinking of, like, down payment assistance. And I have friends who have tried to move to Morrisville in the past five years that make twice what I make, and I assure you that I'm not at the bottom of the AMI. And they attempted to buy houses and, you know, were willing to put down 25%, 30%, and immediately, because of the low amount of inventory in Morrisville, were launched into bidding wars that took that 25% to 30% up to where they couldn't afford it. And frankly, no amount of town assistance probably would have helped them had they not been at the income level that they were at. I just, you know, I think that we may have to go, like, way outside the box on this. I just, you know, because I'm looking at all the options. I mean, you tell me if I'm way off the mark here, but I'm looking at all these options and I'm thinking, do we have the money as a town to put aside rental assistance in perpetuity? Because if we're not building wealth, if we're not building homeownership, then that's us, supporting rent forever. You know, if we want to do down payment assistance, how much money are we going to throw at a program like this to provide meaningful down payment assistance? Like, so in other words, I guess what I'm saying is that we either have to really adjust the scope of who we're saying that we can help. Like, it may be that, it may be that we, like, we might just have to swallow the bitter pill that we may not be able to help the people on the lowest end of the income scale live in Morrisville. We may not have the capacity to do that as much as we might want to. And we, I don't know, I definitely had a way that I was going here, but I guess I'm saying that we, you know, if we look at, so, and I don't think we could, like, for now, I definitely think the pilot should be as narrow as possible, but even looking at the pilot, if we say that we can provide, you know, pick a number, $25,000 toward a down payment for 20 people, okay, then we have to figure out who is going to benefit the most from $25,000 tacked onto what they have already saved and already have for a down payment and what they're already eligible for in terms of a loan, and who can we actually help live in Morrisville? And I'm not sure that that's like a kind of a typical affordable workforce housing kind of customer. And also, I got to tell you that I saw the slide, I think it was Slide 14, where all the different organizations and some of them offer, like, you know, financial counseling and, yeah, financial counseling and, like, training on credit, on, like, building credit and savings. And I think there's something fundamentally offensive about the idea that the reason that people can't afford a house is because they're somehow not savvy about saving. You know what I mean? Like, I just wanted to call that out because I think that the reason people can't afford houses is because housing prices are ridiculous, salaries are too low, and, I don't know, I just felt like that also needed to be said. So, yeah, I don't actually have any questions, but I just, I'm not sure that we're really heading in the right direction here, and I think we're talking about a lot of broad income categories of people that we could help with different types of programs, and I think that, I just don't think most of them are actually relevant to anything that's going to work for Morrisville, given our specific situation.
Let me respond to a couple of things that I've heard.
Sure.
So first, when we talk, when we develop affordable housing plans, we tend to talk about different kinds of tools that are available to local governments, right? You can use subsidy, put up funds, land use, use regulation to change what gets built, and tenants' rights, so things that can help keep people in their homes. North Carolina really limits what you can do in the tenants' rights space, so often we're not talking about it. But the point of that is, each of those is an important part of a comprehensive approach to affordable housing, and you can't solve an affordable housing problem with one of those alone. So as we'll talk about in the next section, there are ways that land use regulation to increase housing supply will help, right? It will help to create more inventory. It'll help to create more market rate housing for the families that live in Morrisville, for the families that want to move to Morrisville, right? You are a growing community. More housing supply will help you continue to accommodate that growth without the skyrocketing housing prices that you've seen, right? But that's not going to serve, it's not going to fundamentally change the economics of who can afford to live in Morrisville. Subsidy is the best way to do that. So that's one thing, right? It's a little bit of everything. You can't buy your way out of it, and you can't build your way out of it. You need to do both. The other thing, when we're just talking about, so if you're talking about down payment assistance, we're really, we're not talking about, in most cases, the lowest-income people in the community. We're talking about generally people between 80% and 100% or 80% and 120% of the median income. As we've seen and as we'll show you in the next section, those are households that are currently struggling to afford to buy homes in Morrisville. They're households that three, five years ago could buy a median home. Now, they can afford to buy maybe some of the homes that are in Morrisville, but that inventory, as you said, is very small. These numbers, $55,000 for an 80% area median income, and again, the housing market, the construction, it's all moving around, right, in the last three to six months since the pandemic, really. But based on the numbers at the point in time that we were looking at them, an 80% AMI household, which is, again, a household earning about $80,000 of income in a year, would need about $55,000 to purchase a home in Morrisville. A household making closer to $100,000 or 100% of the median income would need about $25,000 to purchase a median home in Morrisville. So that's, I mean, those are real numbers based on the Morrisville market. Again, the market is always shifting, but in terms of concern about who are we talking about and what's actually happening in Morrisville, these are numbers that we've actually developed based on those realities in the town.
So are you saying that you have, I'm not disagreeing with you necessarily, maybe I am, but are you saying that a family making $100,000 a year would only require $25,000 in some type of down payment assistance?
Yeah, I think we --
To afford a house in Morrisville?
I think we, I mean, to afford the median house in Morrisville. That's not to say they couldn't go to a different community and buy more house for the same amount of money.
Right. Where, what was your estimate at the time that you ran the numbers? What was your estimate of the median house price in Morrisville?
I think it was 480. We had to adjust it a little bit because the inventory kind of dropped out, but I think it was below 500, but it was not by a lot. Somewhere in the 400, I think.
That was before the interest went up.
It was right around the, yes. So housing prices coming back down, but affordability is still, you know, mortgage costs still going up.
Yeah, I guess I'm just expressing some concerns about getting too far down a path and then finding out that we've spent a lot of money and can't help the people that we thought we were going to be helping.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's a, part of the idea of a pilot is to test it out.
Okay.
Okay.
We value pragmatism, and that's what we heard a lot of right there, so we want to do things that matter. Councilmember Rouse, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Just to address some of the points brought up by Councilmember Robati, if there's one thing our town is probably better at than anybody, it's being innovative and out of the box. When recently, we got a new public high school when no one thought we did because of our great staff and our council and everybody. So I think one thing we have to do is, we know there's a problem. You know, somebody that makes less than $100,000 a year is going to have a hard time getting home. The challenge that we faced up until now is increasing supply just isn't working because the rental costs don't go down. And we've done some deals with conditional rezonings where we've gotten affordable housing units. So one thing I think that we could possibly consider, but I don't know whether we would be, have the legislative authority to do it, is a collaborative partnership with developers to say, we're identifying a problem, but could we possibly look at creating an affordable housing fund? If we perhaps were able to charge some kind of a fee to developers similar to our parks payment in lieu, then when a developer is coming, we could partner with them and say, look, you're going to create a 250 unit. So, you know, whatever it is, we could come in and get that money. And just like Councilmember Garamella brought up, the idea of how, you know, we can invest in transportation projects because, you know, we, years ago, we had the vision of having a transportation fund. So that's point number one. I think that's really important for us to explore, and I would ask as our consultant if you could maybe explore that idea of how would it be good an affordable housing fund created so that we would be able to have money in the kitty that we could actually invest? Point number two is, I really like this idea that one entrepreneur, Brian Lorrie, came in and talked about, you know, it made me thinking about these incentives that we're providing to the development community, is that really doing a good enough job incentivizing the local community so that they're more invested in how do we partner? So this idea, I think the name of the company is Social Equity, this idea of providing, like, you know, grant, instead of the $3 million of incentives going to the developer, the money would go into some kind of a grant program and that individuals could team up. Maybe it's, you know, friends or family, and so they have this ability to negotiate better prices, right? And so I just think that that's where we have an opportunity in Morrisville is to get creative and out of the box. Otherwise, Councilmember Robati is correct. If we just put money at the problem and we don't have the money and we don't have the ability to, if increasing supply isn't going to solve the problem, then we're going to have the same problem a year from now that we're talking about now, that somebody can't afford a house. So just to want to bring those up. Don't really have a question, but if we could, you know, and if you're listening tonight in the public and you have ideas, please send them our way.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you for this presentation. It is a lot of details. One comment to Councilmember Rouse's comments is, we will have this same problem a year from now, no matter what we do, and we'll probably have this same problem five years from now. And like you were saying, not one thing is going to be the silver bullet. So, I mean, my comments are that I'm a big fan of homeownership. So, you know, out of the four options, I lean toward the down payment assistance. You know, I bought my first house as a single person when I was 25 years old. I used my own money. I didn't have any help from parents. And now I'm a single person again, and I still own a home. I have a lot of equity built up in it now, almost too much because it's hurting my financial aid calculations for my son's college, but what I'm saying is, like, your points on the slide for down payment assistance, I mean, that's the way to help people out of poverty, is to start building that equity. And then when you own a home, you take ownership of it and you keep it up and you, it makes you feel better about yourself. And I think there's a lot to be said for all of those benefits that are not exactly quantifiable. I've been helping volunteer with Habitat for Humanity, and when you do that, you end up, I've met some of the individuals that are there putting in their sweat equity in order to eventually get a house of their own, and they are very excited about the possibility of being able to own their own home for their kids. So I know, like, in the past, we've made these deals with developers like Alta-Morseville and the people at Zira Slater Road. And it sounds nice at the time that we are creating these affordable housing units, but, like, the bullets in your slides say, it's not permanent. You know, we've, the times that those options have been offered, no one talks about, well, what happens to the individual 10 years from now? They're going to have to get kicked out. So I definitely believe that down payment assistance is the way to go. I like Rouse's idea about creating a fund, and we could use that fund to help go toward down payment assistance. And my last comment is, you know, we're not going to be able to help everyone, and we're not going to be, we're not going to be able to have the, you know, to be, have the perfect solution coming out of the gate, but, like you're saying, it's a pilot program. We need to start small to get it going, or we're never going to do anything. And then expand it or change different options as we go along and learn, you know, what's helping and what's not. That's all I have. Thank you.
Did you hear anything you wanted to respond to, or?
Not specifically, but I appreciate your --
Okay, great. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by myself, please.
Thank you. Well, this is one of the key topics that I have been following for several years. I was a member of the Wake County Steering Committee on Affordable Housing, the very first one, and we, you know, reviewed a lot of scenarios relating to federal programs, and the federal programs, whether they're rent subsidies and controlled support systems, are time-sensitive. There are 20-year programs, and they have to be renewed, or the building or area will go to private hands, and then those tenants would be evicted, perhaps, if they could not make the rent. That has happened across Wake County over the last couple of years. We have seen, you know, changes in the ownership of rental properties where it is not favorable for the tenant. So having an agreement, even a small one, for 10 years, I think, was making a gap measure towards understanding the affordable housing situation in Morrisville a little bit more. I think with that experience, we're ready to have this conversation. So rental assistance, to me, is sensitive because I don't want to impact the people that are the most vulnerable by providing them direct money that could be counted against their other programs that they're eligible for. That is just a very sad situation. It would, I actually would like to expand the question of what we know today about the taxes and the way we deliver money to help with assistance in any of these scenarios, what those consequences might be. They might be detrimental to the lower end of the spectrum, and they might be minimal to the, you know, the other area of the spectrum. But I'm very sensitive to not hurting or not causing harm when we're trying to help, right? The philosophical statements by Councilmember Robati are valid. I was doing a little time check. We put our policy forward in 2019, and Apple announced that they are building a headquarters in April of 2021. And since then, most of our homes in Morrisville have increased 60% to 100% in value. The home value in 2019, the average one was around 300, and now it's 450 to 500. Down payment assistance, $100,000 or more for someone who's making 50,000 to 100,000 seems to be, in my head, where the math goes, not 25,000. So it's, I know you haven't worked the model that way, but I think we need to do more work and think about what we're really doing and who we're really trying to affect. I started this journey out looking at the gap. and who we're really trying to affect. I started this journey out looking at the gap in the Wake County program. There are programs for extreme, um, low income people and there's some moderate, uh, support, but the workforce housing didn't really have a lot of support. And Morrisville has an opportunity maybe to help with that segment of the population. So that's where some of this, for me, has come. I don't know if we can get there with the amounts, um, presented tonight. I, I, I'm really thinking if people need to have a partner or a family member or something in order to make enough household income to be able to live in a house or in an apartment. And then later in your discussion, you talk about density and I hear developers talk about, oh, we can make things more affordable by having a studio apartment. That's not affordable because you need to combine incomes in order to get to where you can live, um, where you want, like in Morrisville. So it, there's, this is such a huge challenge for me and I'm very doubtful we're going to get where we need to be, um, tonight. The one area that I would like to explore further that I think has the most hope is the shared equity homeownership. The town has land. And some of it, we could argue is, has diff- different purposes, but we could identify some land for, um, a land trust and then work through that situation. I, I don't see how the other programs are going to be, um, as easy to manage as when we have control of the land. So, thank you.
On the rental assistance, and I appreciate you bringing that up about the, the implications for people receiving public assistance. I should say, um, the precedents that we looked at for that were really for like high rent markets and employers that wanted to help, um, not moderate income employees to live in the market. So I think one of the examples we looked at was Santa Clara University offering assistance to, um, you know, graduate students and, and, uh, junior faculty. So that's kind of more of, it's less the population that's receiving public assistance and more kind of lowering, uh, moderate income workforce kind of assistance. So, but I definitely appreciate you bringing that up. It's a really critical, uh, point and one that we, we should absolutely be wary of on that question.
Um, I think it's my turn. I really appreciate everyone sharing their thoughts and their values. And I'm very much on the pragmatic side, like Councilmember Robati, that we're not going to be able to move the needle that much. Um, I'm reminded of the story of if there's like 100,000 jellyfish on the beach, you go up, you throw a couple in and someone looks at you, that's not helping. Well, it helped those two. So I think we're in a position right now that we can help some and just a few. And I think starting with something that helps people build their equity in the homes, as was mentioned by Councilmember Fender, is a path forward for us. And putting our toe in the water, and I think down payment assistance is the one that can get us there in the short term. I really like the idea of having some kind of funding and revenue sources for it. I don't think we have legislative authority to get anything like the apartment, um, thing that we get or PPIL or anything like that. But that's probably worth exploring as a legislative thing to see if new developments, because we have a lot of new development coming. And it doesn't necessarily have to be apartments. It could be commercial if we can assess a little fee towards affordable housing. Um, we do have the one cent towards our transportation. If we, as a council, feel this is really important and want to dedicate maybe a half cent going forward, and that would be the extent to start, to see where we're going on that. Um, so those are my just thoughts right off the bat is that I, I'm really in favor of down payment assistance. I think that's the one that's a tried and true method for lots of municipalities. Um, I did have a couple of parking lot items that I was thinking about. Uh, for the flexible rental support, um, those four different ways to do things, I'd be really interested to know if Wake County would be willing to step in and provide that countywide. So that would be something that's serving a lot of the people. Um, I think of like Dorcas Ministries and Carrying Place, places that provide that type of assistance already. Um, it'd be nice to have something overall that we wouldn't have to touch, but would serve our people. Um, the Wake County median income, is that the one that we're using right now at 100K?
The median, area median income is defined by HUD at the county level.
Okay. So is there any opportunity for us to figure out what it actually is for Morrisville? Because I think ours is significantly different.
We can tell you what the median income is in Morrisville, but what I'm saying is that for the purpose of housing policy, area median income is defined by HUD at the county level. So anyone that's, um, anyone that's, you know, if you have a low income housing tax credit development that comes into town, um, those income levels are going to be set at the county level based on area median income. So, I mean, the, the town could define a different income level to be, um, served by a potential down payment assistance program, but you would have to come up with some formula for, um, updating that on an ongoing basis if you're not going to base it off of the HUD requirements.
Okay. Cause it's kind of apples and oranges. We're not looking at HUD grants right now. We're looking at our own program. And talking about AMI, I'm getting a little bit lost. And I think our residents, it's not really helpful to talk about 80%, 80% of what, and it's not even our number. So I'd be very interested in knowing what is the median income for our households and start using that and stop talking about AMI. Like our people, our general households are 120,000. Okay, fine. Everyone understands that. And then we can make decisions based on that.
Actually, Mayor, um, AMI is really important to housing policy and fairness and it could have legal implications if we ignore the AMI. It could be an and, not an or. That's what I'm saying.
I'm all about the and. So thank you very much for that clarification. I know you've dug in really deep on this. So I'm just trying to make it easy.
I just don't want us to stray in the, you know.
In a place that's going to get us into muddy waters. I'm very much on that. Um, so I'm very much in favor of trying to get something on down payment assistance happening and administering that, um, in whatever ways most efficient. I think doing that within our staff would probably be good to sort of build that, um, those muscles. And then we could possibly expand later. Um, so if we only help three or four people in the first year, three or four households, I think that's a start because I really put a lot of value on trying to have our staff, because it is kind of compensation also. If we can have our staff living in town, having shorter commutes, and it's part of their benefits, I think that would be useful. Um, also having Wake County school staff closer into town, I think is a positive. And I think our residents would understand and support that going forward. I'm a little bit concerned about rental assistance in that it's not sustainable. Um, and it's not doing the building of the equity that makes families stronger, that can actually stay here and continue to stay here. Um, I think that down payment assistance is the thing that gets us there in the short term and the long term. So those are kind of the values that I'm trying to share with the council for their thoughts as well. Um, anything you want to respond to on that, or?
No, I mean, I think that's, it's very, um, very helpful context. Um, I like the idea of, uh, I mean, if we want to discuss further, I think definitely a parking lot item, the half cent or a cent for affordable housing, that's a model that I think Apex has pursued and that, uh, is a pretty common way to pursue dedicating some local funds for affordable housing. And as you mentioned, Wake County is doing a lot in this space, including around preservation of existing affordable housing. Um, and so I think there's a lot of opportunities, and this is outside of the scope of what we've been engaged for. But if this is something council wants to continue, um, to discuss with Wake County, there's a lot of opportunities, I think, if the town's able to come with a little bit of either land or assistance or, um, funding or regulatory relief, um, to then leverage Wake County dollars to get some of those, um, housing built that's serving those, those more workforce income levels that are maybe not going to be a served direct, served as directly by a down payment assistance program, but that are still, um, members of the community. So I, I would encourage you all to continue to have that conversation with Wake County or amongst yourselves. Um, and we can certainly put it in the parking lot for our own future inquiry if that's something that council wants to pursue. But exciting to hear you all talking about that idea.
Yeah, like the, uh, the and idea.
Yes.
At this point, we're still early in the process. Uh, Mayor Protam, uh, is the last, so everyone has a chance. And then if someone wants to revisit, we'll do a time check on that.
So I'm going to echo a lot of things I heard. Number one, I don't think we're going to solve this tonight. That's number one. So, um, I think we still need to refocus. I, I agree. I think we can't be all things to all people. Um, and we struggled with that early on, even back in 2019. We talked about, um, when we talked about this, um, housing choice program and who to include, we talked about military and, and it was like you ju- we are not going to be all things to all people and we do need to focus. And maybe our, our scope and our criteria needs to be refined somewhere. And I think that's, that's fine. Um, I also think the, for me personally, the, the ability to have a sustainable, permanently affordable program with units is really important. I think just, um, and I don't know how a better way to say it, just throwing money at a problem every year, year after year after year, is not going to solve anything because this issue is going to continue to get worse and worse. And, um, and so I think to have the ability, and I liked some of the, the wording you had in here about the shared equity homeownership, it scared me when you said that's the most difficult too, because I like the idea that you can recycle funds then too. Um, and, and there's the sharing of the wealth, um, as, as, um, you know, as, as somebody, as the years go by. So, um, all of that, I think, is good. Um, but I, I, I struggle with how much, um, yeah, how, how much and how many we can help. And then the, the budget implications too, as we're moving forward and, and how much we're willing to, and I'm not sure that we've had that conversation at all, quite frankly. So, um, um, those are just, I'm looking at my notes real quick. The only, those are the only comments I have right now. And I, I do think we need a little more time to refocus and, and really, um, there's a lot of philosophical conversation that I'm not sure this council has had, um, as we talk about this. I think we all realize, because I remember early on, we talked about the fact that who's not in our community that we want here.
Right.
And so, because that makes for a better, healthier community when we're all here together. And so how do we do that in a really sustainable way too, which, um, so I will tell you, I, and I'll just add this to, I like all these options. I think the rental assistance, um, quite frankly, I think of our young people when I look at that. Young people starting out in their career, um, young teachers coming out of school to teach. They don't, even the down payment, we could afford, they're not going to, it's going to do nothing for them. So do we want them living in our community or not? And if the way to get them living in our community or help them, not get them, but to help them live in our community and be close to work is a monthly rental subsidy, well, then I'm all in for that. Or to help them with their, um, security, um, down, down positive, well, I'm all in for that because I thought we wanted those people living in our community and part of our community. And if that's not what we want, well, then we need to rethink that. Um, because if we're only going to help with down payment assistance, we have narrowed the field down to the people we want in our community, which is fine, but, um, then we're leaving out a whole nother group of folks, a whole nother group that are valuable and important in our community. And so, um, and there, you know, sometimes there's no other way to, to, to help that sphere of the community. So, um, again, I think there's really philosophical, um, discussions that we still need to have that, um, to drill down on where we're really going to end up.
Okay. So we made a commitment to the council to do a time check right at nine, and I think everyone's had one bite at the apple at this one. Um, so if maybe we can take a break and come back, and if anyone feels they have some more burning item to share or a question, then we'll touch on this last bit first and then we'll let them go through the whole second section without questions to try to make sure that we cover everything.
Right. I have a headache.
Mm-hmm.
I want to stay. How long are we going to be here on this topic?
I'd imagine it's another hour for the second half.
I think it's longer. There are 77 slides in this deck.
I can go through it relatively briefly, but there is a lot to discuss. I will say that.
So, so can I add this? We are not going to settle where we're headed on this program tonight. I, I can guarantee you that not right now.
Wait, hold it, Liz.
I'm not sure we need to revisit again right now. I think for me personally, maybe get through the next couple of slides. I'm not sure we're going to settle that issue tonight either. So why don't we get through all this information and then that gives us time to digest everything and then come back at some future time when we are going to, um, make some, some decisions and move forward.
Because to be honest, I would love to talk about this all night long. It is so complicated, but it's important that the council have the conversation because it's, it's very complex and values are all over right now, you know, in different places.
I think that honestly, I think that this, I mean, you want to talk about like scheduling meetings and work sessions. I think this, I'm happy to hear whatever you have to say tonight. I mean, I, I'm really impressed with all the work that's gone into this. But I think honestly, this is something where I could see getting together for a meeting to talk about this deck, like, you know, go through the whole thing, have conversations. Like, I, I, I don't know why we always start this stuff.
Retreat item.
This is a retreat item. I totally agree. Totally agree.
So I'd love to hear from staff because I think generally the goal was hoping to narrow down those four a little bit. I know you're not prepared to do it, but it's okay to have goals and to know that that's pretty much the next step of this process. Because this is where we're going at next, the zoning policy. It's kind of another phase. Uh, they can work in hand, but essentially our decisions on that, those first four are where we put our dollars. This is where we incentivize other stuff.
I'm going to be able to think about this a lot better after a break, if I'm 100% honest.
So Danielle has something to say.
I feel like we've heard, we've heard a lot of good feedback tonight, and I feel like there's certain themes that have, have come throughout. And so it's something that, um, hearing this, and I understand there's a lot of material to digest and, you know, we're probably going to have some more conversations on this. Um, I, I think we got a lot of good information out of this first part of the conversation, um, to be able to hopefully maybe walk away with some stuff, um, think about next strategies for that. Um, I know there is a sort of second half to go. And one thing that I might say with that is, um, if there is sort of, I'm going to call, we might just do, say, preview of what was kind of being considered, the thought process on that, um, having that in your minds for then potentially a future, um, discussion. But that way we're not bringing up a whole entire new topic again, um, later on. So Martha, did you have something?
Yeah, I've got to agree with Danielle. I don't think staff felt you were going to be able to finalize decisions. And we tried to be very conscious of saying, you don't have to make a decision tonight to still be able to incorporate this in your budget discussions. And we did, if you looked, we also already indicated this is a potential retreat topic. I do think hearing your UDO incentive options will help also inform this part of the conversation. So a preview is a great approach for the rest of your meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, want to take a quick 14-minute break? Come back real fresh. So let's reconvene at 9:40.
Got to be a new session, 7:00.
I, I'm going to leave the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
Okay. Okay. We're coming back into session for, uh, part three of incentive zoning policy update. Um, we're going to do another time check. Let's try in 45 minutes, make sure that we're moving along smartly. And we'll try to keep our points to questions. On this one, it's a little bit more in-depth and denser than the last part. And we're not looking to make decisions tonight, just really get educated on this part. So pass it back to you.
Thank you very much. And yes, our goal here is to provide an overview of some of the types of options you might have to pursue an incentive zoning policy. That would be providing incentives in your zoning code, uh, for developers in exchange for some affordability. Um, so we want to walk through, what are some options that we've seen based on market and financial analysis that the town might be able to incentivize developers to provide affordable housing? This is a way to create affordable housing without the town putting any money in. Um, so again, in your town, uh, affordable housing plan, you talked about, um, you know, in particular, the lowest earning households, uh, don't have enough options for housing in the town. Lowest, lower, lower income homeowners, um, have challenges as well. Um, and as a result, one of the recommendations that came out of the plan was to identify ways to encourage developers to produce affordable housing. So I'm going to start first talking about homeownership and then talk about rental and multifamily. Uh, as we've already mentioned today, home prices have grown really rapidly in Morrisville, particularly in the last two years. Um, we've seen a 59% increase in the median home price since 2020. Um, that's, you know, classic hockey stick growth here. Um, so you're going from a So, you're going from a situation in which in 2015, the median household could buy the median home and had, you know, more than enough money to do that, to today when the median purchase price is greater than the purchase capacity of a median house. And as I mentioned earlier, we're really seeing that $100,000 of income in Morrisville is the minimum income really that you need in order to be able to afford to buy a home. And that's really even rising beyond that. On the rental side, since 2016, growth in rent has exceeded growth in household income, which has exacerbated challenges for renters. Again, even though they were tracking pretty closely, rent was out, rent was, rent growth was outpacing income growth by a bit between 2016 and 2020. Since 2020, you've seen an additional 25% increase in median rents in Morrisville. Currently, you know, a two-bedroom apartment rents for over $2,000 and we've heard that that might even be going up in this year. When we look at cost burden, so this is a measure of renters who are paying more than 30% of their income on rent, what we see is that it's increased for renters across all incomes since 2010, but really the most, to me, the most noticeable thing here is that there are almost no renter households earning less than $50,000 a year in Morrisville that can afford the rent that they're paying. So, everybody in Morrisville with income below 50,000 is paying too much in rent. Excuse me. You've also seen a significant growth in renters in Morrisville, particularly in households earning $75,000 and more. Another thing to note, there are no low-income housing tax credits currently, or tax credit units currently in Morrisville. There have been none added since 2000. So, the, the low-income housing tax credit is the primary federal tool for financing affordable housing and it's not getting built in Morrisville. We conducted a preliminary market analysis. We reviewed market trends. We talked to developers. I'm not going to go into these in detail, but you have summary of some of the things that we, we found. Mostly, we were trying to understand key assumptions about how development is operating in Morrisville in order to develop financial analyses to inform the assessment of the incentive zoning options. Okay. One of the things that we want to talk to you about today, excuse me, is whether town homes might provide a lower-cost homeownership option in Morrisville. So, you've seen some town home development recently. Town homes are naturally both smaller and more inexpensive to build than detached single-family houses. We know there's been some resistance to town homes in the past, but one of the things that we're going to talk to you about today is whether you're willing to accept more town home development because they are on average more naturally affordable to moderate income households in Morrisville. When we looked at rental and what's getting built, we looked at mid-rise apartments, which are increasingly popular for new development, as well as garden-style apartments, which are much more common in Morrisville and still being built to a fair amount. We also looked at small lot infill or smaller, those sort of 90 units, 100 units and lower apartments to understand what's, what's being built. So, land consumption required to deliver garden-style apartments could be a factor that limits their feasibility moving forward. We're likely to see more development of mid-rise and smaller lot infill development on the multifamily side. And I apologize, I'm jumping around a little bit. We've tried to truncate this for, for time, but wanted to just lay the groundwork that we've looked at the market and tried to understand it, to, you know, understand where it's going in order to inform how you might try to structure an incentive program moving forward. As I mentioned in the last section, increasing the housing supply through development could help to stabilize housing prices. So, expanding your regulations, allowing more types of development by right, increase the production of housing, it'll help to stabilize housing prices, but it's not going to meet the needs of lower-income households. That's something that we talked about in the previous section and it's something that's really critical to understanding why incentive zoning is a really attractive, potentially attractive opportunity for the town to directly incentivize affordable housing development without putting in additional funds. So, an incentive zoning program essentially works by balancing out the reduced potential cash flow that a developer might see as a result of building some affordable units with incentives that either reduce their development costs or increase the potential to make money off of their property by increasing the number of units that they can build or making other adjustments. So, we've looked at several different options to balance affordability on the one hand with incentives for developers on the other hand. In North Carolina, you cannot require the provision of affordable housing units, so this is all about making sure that the incentives that you offer are sufficient to incentivize developers to take advantage of them. You know, we can, we can create an incentive, if nobody takes advantage of it, it's not going to have any impact and, and then we haven't, we've wasted everybody's time. So, I'm going to talk first about the single-family incentive zoning analysis that we did and then about the multifamily. And I'll pause at the end of the single-family in case there are questions. Essentially, looking at opportunities for incentives for single-family zoning, single-family affordability, you need to be willing to increase the density of development in single-family neighborhoods. And this is, I got to say, not existing single-family neighborhoods, this is for new subdivisions. You need to be able to accept some increased density. We looked at options for smaller minimum lot sizes. Basically, reducing lot sizes slightly reduces the size of the house that's, that gets built, but it allows developers to produce many more homes within the same piece of property, which both helps on the market side by increasing supply, but also in exchange for that increased density, they're going to be asked to provide a certain number of affordable homeownership opportunities. It is difficult to move the needle on single-family affordability just through density unless you're willing to go to very small lot sizes. And so, we think that town homes and other missing middle housing options such as duplexes, we've looked primarily at town homes here, really provide a much stronger opportunity to efficiently produce affordable homes for new homeowners, both because of their lower cost to be built, but also because you can produce a little bit more of them in the same amount of space. So, those are the two things that we're really going to be looking at on single-family zoning. So, setting aside town homes, looking just at detached, single-family, excuse me. We looked at three different options for reducing the minimum lot size, increasing density and then requiring some affordable housing to be produced as a result. So, under current zoning regulations, your current subdivision rules have minimum lot sizes of 6,500 square feet. We looked at options at 5,500, 4,500 and 3,500. So, that maximum density is a 3,500 square foot lot size, which is quite a bit smaller. And we looked at two different options to produce affordability. The first is in which the developer would build the house, build all the houses and sell a certain number of them for less than it costs to build them at a, at a price that would be affordable to an 80% AMI household. The second option was that they donate a certain number of lots to a nonprofit developer to do the same thing. In general, it's better if you have the option for the donated land, but I just want to point out here, if we're looking at 5,500 square foot lots, really you're not, you're producing more homes, but you're really not producing any affordable homes. They can't make any money that way. The moderate density increase, you could get about 7% of homes affordable with the selling option and about 10% with the donation option. And you'd really need to push to that maximum density increase to get past 10%. So, again, if you're willing to think about future subdivisions being built with minimum lot sizes of 4,500 or rather allowing developers to build on smaller lots in exchange for 10% of the lots to be donated to a nonprofit developer and sold as affordable homeownership opportunities, that is an option that we think is feasible for the town. We looked at, at town homes, again, as I said, a 10% site allocation for town homes on its own, again, does not move the needle, but if we were to allow, to change the, the minimum lot size to 5,500, so that's this minimal density increase that didn't move the needle on its own, and allow 10% of the site to be set aside for town homes, you would produce 66 single-family homes and 15 town homes, both at lower price points than new construction here. The developer, whereas the developer here in this scenario would have an increase in profit resulting from this, so that's a clear incentive, here it's pretty similar to the baseline. So, they, the 62 homes under current zoning regulations and the smaller lots in the town homes, they're really having a comparable profit. So, it is a, a much better way to produce more volume of affordable units, but we'd want to talk about whether there's some additional enhancements that could be offered, a fee rebate or something like that in, or some other sort of regulatory consideration that's not large, but that provides a further inducement to developers to take this option. So, when we talk about single-family incentive zoning, the questions are really about density. So, is the town willing to allow smaller lot, single-family homes to be developed in new subdivisions in exchange for affordable units? How much are you willing to do that? And are you open to encouraging and incentivizing town homes and single-family developments? Those are really the three, the three price, the three key decision points for discussion there. So, I'm going to pause there. Do you want to pause for discussion on single-family or should I move forward with the multifamily?
I just have a quick question of staff really. How much land is available still for single-family development? I mean, it's pretty much all gone, right? And it's already in stages of being developed and permitted, so is there even an opportunity in this space?
There's still some. To your point, there's not a lot. I think all of you can recall going through that future land use map a couple of years ago and really pointing out, you know, what lots were vacant and what lots were left to be developed. And there's not a significant amount. Doing a smaller lot, kind of single-family development though, does help with that because again, on what's left, you could get more homes and it provides a different kind of housing option that we don't have a lot of in Morrisville. So, just adds to the variety of the housing stock too.
So, all of those are by right now, so we'd have to give some more incentives to get them to donate part of their land because they could just build the smaller ones as we let them and they don't have to do anything, right? Would it switch to a condition?
So, right now, it depends what zoning district you're in, but you at least need to have a 6,500 square foot lot. So, what HRNA is talking about is changing the UDO to allow a 5,500 square foot lot or 4,500 or 3,500 in exchange for getting some affordable housing.
Okay. So, it'd be in, in a condition that's embedded in the UDO essentially. So, it's inclusionary, but we're getting around that.
Yes. It would be voluntary. So, again, the numbers would have to work for a developer for them to want to take advantage.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, on the administrative side, if we were to move forward with sort of, once we had proof of concept here, you know, if the town decides it's not worth making a UDO amendment for this because there might be relatively few options, we could also work on drafting a policy basically to say, developer is interested in, in developing subdivisions in Morrisville, we're willing to talk to you about potential, you know, changes through the, you know, sorry, the entitlements process to negotiate density for affordability rather than making it part of the UDO.
Wouldn't be codified, but it'd be there.
Application.
Okay.
Councilmember Fender? So, on our subdivisions that have town homes in them now, what is the lot size per town home?
We're going to have to look that up. I'll get that to you in a minute.
Okay. I'm just curious how that compares to this 5,500, 4,500.
While we're in a quick pause, I'd just like to recognize that Councilmember Scruggis-Johnson left at the break, if anyone's wondering about that. Do you have a follow-up to that or she'll get back to us in a second. Mayor Portman Johnson?
So, I think Councilmember Fender and I are on the same wavelength. That information would help me too, but I, 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 this, the last chart before this, I think in theory, this is, you would, this should work, but I'm, I'm not sure that would be valuable or, like the figures you have here and I, I don't think that translates to Morrisville. I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm thinking of the one development right down here on Morrisville, Carpenter, that, and I realize they're, the single-family homes are on a little bit larger lots, but they are tiny lots. And then they also built town homes and both the single-family and the town homes are going for a whole lot more money than this. So, I think your chart, your, your slide before this where you said more affordable, that, that I could buy, you know, this concept would, would give some more affordable units, but I would not call these affordable.
So, I should specify, the town homes are still being sold at a subsidy in this scenario for less than it costs to build them.
Okay. That's different then. And how, and how, so how does that work?
So, again, there's a lot of different ways administratively to make it work. The developer could, excuse me, work with a nonprofit to identify income-qualified buyers, but essentially as part of the approvals process, you would record requirements that those units would be sold to income-qualified buyers and have a process for qualifying who those buyers are and the price point for those homes.
So, for the town homes you're talking about, not, not for the?
Not for the single-family. The other 66 homes are sold at a market rate. This is assuming that the, the homes are a bit smaller, 3,100 square feet, based on the smaller lot size. And this is based on Morrisville market data. Again, the market is in flux, but this is based on conversations that we had with developers and research we did on the, the market in Morrisville.
Okay. That helps. Okay. Sorry if I missed that. Okay.
I have a follow-up question. So, that 324,000, is that with the subsidy?
Yes.
If I could respond to the earlier question, and the standards are different in different zoning districts. So, if you look at low-density residential, only single families allowed, that minimum lot size, single-family detached is the only thing allowed, that minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. As we get into our medium-density residential and our high-density residential, those districts right now also allow town homes. So, just for context, your MDR district for a single-family detached lot, that minimum lot size right now and the medium density is 5,000 square feet and your minimum lot width is 50 feet. For the town homes, whether it's MDR, HDR, there's no minimum lot size, but your lot width goes down to 24 feet. So, whether your medium-density residential or high-density residential, again, 24-foot width is really what you're looking at for the town homes. No minimum for lot size. As you get into the high-density residential, you can do a 3,500 square foot, single-family detached lot right now. But again, when we went through that future land use map, we didn't proactively, we talked about not proactively rezoning to those higher-density districts even where they're shown on the map. Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. We can move on to the next step.
So, we also wanted to look at opportunities to incentivize some affordable multifamily as a percentage of new development. The question here really is what is the town willing to offer developers in exchange for affordability? So, we looked at different development types. As I mentioned, mid-rise apartments are more expensive to develop, but they're likely to account for an increasing share of development moving forward. We looked at different types of incentives, including increased density, reducing parking, changing the parks, trend-changing or waiving some of the park in Lufy. And we looked at different options for affordability. So, the town can ask for units to be affordable at that 80% of area median income level or at 60% of the median income. And as I showed you, when we looked at who can afford to rent in Morrisville, that's really where the need is more acute. And so, it's, though it's more common to target these programs at 80% median income, we really think 60% median income aligns more closely with the gaps in Morrisville's rental market. So, that's something we want to talk to you about as well. Excuse me.
A quick question. If you go back to that slide, what, what percentage of what we've specified as our target audience, people that work for the town or teachers, would fall into that 60% AMI or the 80%?
More of the teachers than the town employees, but I can go. So, of the people that we surveyed? More of the teachers than the town employees, but I can go, so of the people that we surveyed, you can see about, probably about, maybe about a third of respondents or more have incomes below 75,000. That 60% income is sort of in the middle of this range here, so I'd say at least a quarter. So first, we looked at what's feasible currently in Morrisville without any subsidy or incentives, and this is, the point of this is really just to drive home that people can make a lot of money building garden-style apartments in Morrisville. It's borderline, they might potentially be able to make it work, setting aside 10% of units affordable at 60% median income, but they have no incentive to do that. Mid-rise construction is more expensive, and it's a little bit harder to make it work, so it's going to take more incentives to make that feasible. So we looked, in scenarios I'm going to show you, focused primarily on mid-rise and garden-style development, because small lot is currently relatively hard to do. Excuse me. And we looked at two options for affordability. The first is setting aside, sorry. The first was setting aside 15% of the units to be affordable at 80% of the median income, so that's rents of about 1,700 to 1,850 a month. And the second was setting aside 10% of the units to be affordable to renters at 60% of the median income. That's rents between 1,200, 1,250 and 1,400. We looked at different kinds of incentives to see what the town might be able to trade to offer developers as an incentive to provide affordability. We looked at tree requirements, but found that they had a relatively minor impact on, on the development feasibility. The ones that had a more moderate impact were things like a 50% rebate on the parks and payment in Lufi. For mid-rise, it would likely be, have to be 100% rebate. Part of the reason why mid-rise is so expensive is because it typically, more typically requires structured parking. So that's kind of a challenge with mid-rise development that increases the cost. Increasing building heights by one story at 20% increase does move the needle a bit, not, not very much on its own, but in combination with some of these other incentives. And reducing parking minimums was the really big one. A reduction beyond 50%, we talked to developers, and there was some indication that too, obviously too much reduction in parking and 50% was where that pain point was, could make the apartments less marketable. But a reduction of maybe 30% of parking minimums was feasible and really did help to move the needle on making, providing an incentive for developers. Excuse me. So, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, so when you talk about, like, 10% of the units have either the 60% AMI or the 80%, are you talking perpetuity, or?
So that is a really good question. In perpetuity is really difficult anywhere. I mean, we, we have projects in, in very high-rent markets where we're working on, like, 99 years, and it's difficult. The length of affordability is one of the things that would have to be a part of the design of this program, as we went further with the design. Typically, 30 years is, is a starting point for length of affordability. That's, again, for low-income housing tax credits, that's the standard. Could be 15 years, it, it depends. We'd have to look into that more, but you're right, that that's not something that we've spoken to here. It would have to be kind of a, a part of the further analysis.
Thank you.
So basically, the, the primary scenario that we thought was feasible was a 35% reduction in parking minimums, 20% height bonus or one story, and full rebate of the, the park's fee. It would work, that would work for both mid-rise and garden projects. You could do less, you could trade off less to make garden-style feasible, so that's something we want to talk about, is should we focus on mid-rise exclusively? Should we develop lesser incentives on the garden style? I think that's a, a point for further conversation. But this, you'd really need to combine across all three in order to make the mid-rise, or the mid-rise is likely to be more of what you're seeing. Again, this is not a requirement, it's an incentive. So developers are going to build what they're going to build, and what we're trying to do is meet them at that point and say, okay, what if we give you this incentive in order, in exchange? They're going to build the unit sizes they want to build, they're going to build the amount of parking they want to build within regulations, right? And they're going to set the rents where they want to set them, based on where the markets are. The town's goal in developing something like this is to find a way to meet where the market is going and offer a real incentive to produce affordable units. So the discussion questions here, were there incentives not discussed that the town wants to consider? Are there things that we should really take off the table? What, what are your thoughts about those different incentives that I laid out? What are your thoughts about packaging or balancing affordability across those three incentives? Are there different combinations of things that we should be looking at? And then, you know, is there support for focusing at 60% of the median income? Or should we be focusing more at 80%? Those are the real, the real questions that we wanted to pose to you all as you consider these options. We've laid out a sample of what this could look like, both at the multifamily and the single-family. This is a sample, this is not a recommendation. But really, what we want to do is work with you to kind of confirm, test, and refine each of these policy points. That's things like affordability, including length, which is not here, but a, a very important point, which was raised. Which developments are going to be subject to these incentives, and how much incentive are we offering? So those are really the three, the three components to this policy, as we continue to, to discuss what it could look like. I'm going to pause there. That's really the end of the bulk of the presentation. I can speak briefly, but I want to pause for questions.
I'll go ahead and start. If you want to go back to that slide, that was really dense with lots of stuff. I start at the bottom of it. The one that you were just showing with all the different, yes, that one. So starting with single-family detached, where they're going to already be building by right, I would be okay with them having smaller lot sizes in exchange for having some of them being affordable for as long a period as possible. When it comes to the multifamily, I think the market is just going to drive that so much. I mean, I'd rather do something in that space rather than having rental assistance, essentially, because that's our money that's going away forever. But to that end, the PPIL, I don't want to give up any of that, because that is our money. So saying that we're not getting it is the same as us giving it away. So I'd like to not have to give up any of our parks money, because we need that. But if we could work the other things and not damage the quality of life for the people living there. So I think the market will decide that, and I don't think they're going to build anything that isn't going to be purchased. So that, those are my thoughts, and that's where my values land on these two items.
I appreciate that very clear feedback.
Okay. So Councilmember Robati first, followed by Mayor Protam Johnson.
I think that a 20% density bonus and a 35% reduction in parking, parking requirements damage, either damage quality of life for people that will move into the apartments, or damage quality of life for the people that already live here. I, I mean, I'm sorry, I know I'm just the squeaky wheel tonight, but I hate all of those apartment incentives. I mean, we already, already, when we, when we let developers build apartments, we already don't make them provide parking for the amount of cars that people are actually going to be trying to park there. And if, I mean, like, what would be, literally, what would we be down to at a 35% reduction? Like, one-half space per apartment? I mean, seriously, like, are two apartments sharing a space at that point? No. We, and the density bonus, I, I don't know, I, I think we already are getting too many apartments to start talking about density bonuses. Geez, I, I would so much prefer to stay affordability-wise, affordable housing-wise. I would so much prefer to be in the single-family space. And, you know, I really did, I really did think about your comments earlier, Mayor Protam about young people, young teachers, and then, you know, but I was thinking, then, that still leaves, that still, to me, leaves Morrisville as like a starter town, you know? The town where you rent something until you're ready to buy something in Carrier, Apex, or Pittsburgh, or, you know, and I, I would rather help people to buy something here, to build their lives here, to, you know, I, that's where I land on that. I, I mean, I'm definitely, I, I have five children right now, none of whom own a home. So, you know, all of whom are renting, and I, it's not that I'm blind to how hard that is, but I just, I would really like to, for me personally, I would like to stay in the single-family detached, attached, whatever. I don't think, I, I think none of these incentives are acceptable to me.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Well, that's why I said we can't be all things to all people, either, so. Sarah, you may have said this, and I missed it, but what is the definition of mid-rise, and what's the definition of garden-style?
So, I'm sorry, you're right, I didn't, I kind of breezed past some of that in the interest of trying to get through everything. So a garden-style apartment is typically one to three stories, surrounded by surface parking. A lot of the apartments that you see that have kind of, you know, several separated buildings of a couple of stories with apartments that you walk straight into, that's, that's garden-style. Mid-rise is more typically developments that are four to six stories. They might have a common lobby, usually elevator buildings, and more typically have structured parking, or at least some structured, maybe some surface parking.
Okay, thank you, that helps. Actually, I, I, I need to mull all this over. I don't, I don't land anywhere just yet on any of this, quite frankly. I, I don't know, I need, I think, you know, offering up our Parkland payment in Lou is kind of problematic, and, yeah, I don't know about the den, so, about the parking reduction. So I'm going to ask Councilmember Robati, what, what apartment building are you thinking about that we don't have enough parking?
That's, I don't think we, I don't think, generally speaking, we require enough parking anywhere. I mean, I know that, like, I, I'm not even necessarily in, I, I was actually really thinking about, like, townhomes, there's no, I don't think there's any townhome development in, in Morrisville where there's enough parking. And when we talked about the town center, and we talked about the number of apartments versus the number of parking spaces in the parking garage, and I, the math just doesn't work out. So I don't know the specifics of the other, of the stuff that's already here, but I'm saying that in the stuff that we're talking about building, to me, we are not requiring enough parking already.
Okay, because we do have parking, I don't, maybe we, you can share that kind of information with us, too. What, what this reduction in parking really means? Because we do have parking regulations and?
We definitely do.
In the UDO, and folks have to adhere to that. So in the multifamily, I didn't think there was an issue, but, yeah, townhouse communities, that's different.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but even in the, even in the, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily want to get down on a tangent, but I'm saying that even when we talked about, like, the apartments at the, at the upcoming town center, and we talked about the spaces in the parking garage, and it's literally, it, I'm not even sure that it's like one space per, it might be one space per apartment, or like one and a half spaces per apartment. And, because I remember saying to the guy, like, that's insane. And, you know, I just, like, you talk about cutting that by 35%, and I think you're, I think you're down at, like, one space per apartment.
In the Main Street District and your TOD, the parking requirements are much lower, because those are unique areas. But for the rest of the town, just for context, you're looking at, it, it depends on the bedroom mix. So a one-bedroom unit is one space, a two-bedroom unit is one and a half spaces, and then a three-bedroom.
And I'm saying that's definitely not enough par, I mean, I understand where the numbers come from, but I'm saying, in my opinion, that is not enough parking as it is.
Tonya, I don't know, getting back to, I'm not sure where I land on any of this. I will say that, especially when we start talking about the multifamily, maybe by TOD, this does make a little more sense. I'm not being helpful to you tonight, sorry.
Councilmember Garamella.
My question is, and keep me honest, we barely have any land for single-family. Why would anyone pick this opportunity, and they can make more money, without even taking this incentive? Because it's 50 acres land, I think, right behind Breckenridge, you're, I think you just got the site plan into it. It's a block away from Apple Campus. Why would the developer even entertain these kind of things, when he knows that he's, like, the location of Morrisville is such a hot commodity? Why would he even pick any of these options?
So we developed these financial models to very specifically try to, actual prototypical developments in Morrisville, and develop incentive options by providing the affordable units in exchange to get any affordability.
I, I get it. I think, I think this is pretty creative in what you're doing, but also, I'm putting this in with Marshall context. You know, barely we have any land left, and every unit is like a hot commodity. In the house back, a single-family is going for a million bucks. That's a single-family, and townhomes are going for 600,000. So if, for that kind of a developer who's trying to build it, does this incentive really attract him?
That is what our numbers and our analysis tell us. The, the limited amount of land point is a separate point, and it's a real concern. But for where developers are currently, the options that we've put in front of you are workable incentives that would result in better returns to the developer for providing affordability.
The single-family realm, you know, we have less land, but the land that we do have, there are smaller pieces of property than Morrisville seen in the past. So you're creating more buildability, that's a word, on those lots than you have now, which might help attract development, because on some of those properties, you can't do a lot right now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that, but even if you create that, the caveat is, you have to do affordability as part of, even if, if it's a two-acre, say, like, suppose he's trying to put 14 townhomes, just thinking seven per lot, per acre, and you're putting how much, like, 10, or four, four or five units, four units affordable, will that guy really take that offer? That's, that's the question I'm asking, you know? It's not like, you know, you're giving opportunity for smaller lots to be developed. I get that, but will he pick the other one? Because he would love to do it without doing any affordable housing, but how, and then you're saying something like it is all voluntary, right? We cannot force them to do it. So how can we lock our UDO in such a way, you can do this only if you do that? You know, we'll allow you to do it, or if you just say, reduce a lot size, so, like, from 4,500, then that guy can go and do anything, right? You're not basically putting any, you give me, and I'll give you this, kind of a thing. It's, you're, you're not incentivizing him, but you're actually promoting him to go more, build more lots, but you're doing that with the necessity that you would get something in terms of affordability back. And how can you put the teeth around it? You know, is, is my question. That's, that's, that's a key. Why would anyone, if I'm, if I'm thinking from a purely business point of view, I know my houses will be sold in material I do affordable or not. Why should I even go this route? Especially in Morrisville, I'm not talking anywhere out.
She's saying that if they, if the developer allows some affordable housing, the town will let them build denser housing, not that they can just change the UDO to build denser housing, it's a, it would be a requirement.
a requirement.
But it's voluntary, that's the reason that that work has caught me.
It's voluntary and in, in exchange, what you're saying is, you could build it under the regular regulations, in which case you can make $5 million. Or, you can set aside 10% of your lots, donate 10% of your lots to a nonprofit developer to build smaller lots, in which case, you can make five and a half million dollars.
The financial incentive is there, that's why the voluntary works.
They don't get the lot development reduction unless they provide the 10%.
Can you give us examples, anywhere in Wake County this worked?
Nowhere in Wake County has done this in, at the single-family level. Chapel Hill has a program that has some problems, but they're looking at, I think, 12 and a half percent of new single-family... It's difficult to do this well. We're trying to be very aware of and really reflect the market realities. Still can't require developers to... Developers will take advantage of.
So...
Something that we're really trying to solve for.
Because the fact you're saying that no one in Wake County has picked this up, for me, that tells volumes. But, everyone trying to go behind affordable housing and every, like Durham has, not Durham, like, the amount of money Raleigh is spending on affordable housing and other, you know, are doing, and no one is picking this up. Why, why, I'm going to say, I'm just kind of curious as to why they're not picking it.
It's a little bit more straightforward to put money out, and Raleigh is putting a lot of money towards affordable housing. It's a way for the town to get affordable homeownership without putting money into it. It's harder to do well, and it's a relatively new concept, it's harder, you can't require it in order to... At the forefront of doing it, and honestly, inclusionary zoning, whether mandatory or voluntary, has been primarily in very high demand, high development activity, high appreciation markets, increasingly that's Morrisville and some other markets, but in the last five years it hasn't. So, this is sort of a tool, I think, that you're going to see more communities...
Let me explain the, if anyone in North Carolina has done this.
So Chapel Hill has done it, Davidson has done it a bit, but I think it's a relatively new policy. I haven't seen how well it's been working for them. I think we found a couple other places that had similar programs, but at relatively smaller scales.
Okay, I just would like to get more information. I just, I'm just curious, because, you know, we're talking about it, but I want to see somewhere it has worked. And, there might be some reason if, why they're not taking, and I want to know why they're not taking either. That's okay. All right, thank you.
Go again. Okay. I guess, something that Plan Director Stiegel said earlier was interesting, is that we changed our land use plan, but we didn't do the rezonings. So anytime someone asks for a rezoning, that's the opportunity where we can make things happen in a voluntary basis. So having this structure in place makes it a little bit more compulsory if they want the rezoning to match the land use plan, so.
That's how Chapel Hill's program works.
So that's just something to keep in mind, that we can make it a little bit less voluntary, more have-to if they want to build certain density.
You could even, you know, if you chose, go beyond, you know, what's called for the mandatory land use plan. If it calls for medium density, if there's affordable housing and a single-family detached, maybe you're going to high with these kinds of incentives.
But we'd have to have the, the structure in place, so we can point to it and this is an option for you. So that's what makes this exercise very useful.
Negotiation policy like that as opposed to a... Question today, and as you all think through this some more after today, is, you know, what are we willing to trade? And I'm hearing... That's the real question. What are we willing, what are we willing to trade and how much are we willing to...
Okay. Give us a lot more to chew on. Both halves were very meaty. Anything else you want to share?
Just in terms of next steps, I think we're looking for guidance from you. We've given you all a lot to think about. We'll continue to work with Michelle and Danielle to think about, you know, some of the things that we heard here and how we can change our approach moving forward. But our next step will be to finalize a framework of recommendations based on feedback that we all have. We can provide you more additional information to help to, to shape those... And then depending on what you decide to move forward with, we are also available to move forward to Phase Two in terms of putting those policies on paper.
And one thing I'm sure staff has shared with you is how the, the issue with apartments and how there's three areas of town that we're thinking they're appropriate. So, having the height density bonus maybe is against that a little bit, but hard to tell. So we all have to talk about this some more. Staff, anything else you want to have us thinking about?
I was just going to say, thank you, yeah, for all of your time and working through all this today. So we'll, we'll make sure we get back with you on sort of figuring out the next best steps, but really do appreciate the feedback and hearing from you today.
I think we did that in exactly 45 minutes.
Yeah, I was noting that. Well done, everybody.
You're really going to be willing to come back. That was good information.
Yeah.
This was very good.
Okay. We're scheduled to take a quick break, but I think we probably want to power through and go right to closed session. So we don't...
That's my move.
Yep. Everyone okay, just going right into it? So we have one closed session this evening to discuss matters relating to the acquisition of real property and attorney-client privilege. We have no business plan for after our closed session. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks for visiting us. Thank you to staff. That was a great presentation. Sorry we didn't close that one out. As we have no business plan for after our closed session, thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your Town Council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Anything for the good of the order, Town Manager, before we go into closed session? Okay.
Follow up with Councilman...
Okay, so we're not talking about that in the closed session? Okay, then we just need the one closed session item?
That's actually...
Yeah, I said, and the attorney-client privilege. That was, that one.
Do I need to move us in there?
Yes, so I'd entertain a motion for closed session on those two.
Eight, yeah, well, it's, it's... Client, okay. No, no, okay. Pursuant to North Carolina Statute 143...